Hey, so Maria had my laptop, so my laptop's been located, but now Maria needs her laptop.
And I need mine.
And, and the chair needs her laptop.
I'm good, we can start with that laptop.
Yeah.
I had it.
Oh, you have, oh wait, Maria had it, not yours?
Salamanca.
Yeah, Maria needs, yeah, Maria Salamanca, Salamanca needs hers. Yeah, so, yeah, so she has mine, mine was placed at her desk. The chairs, the chairs, yes, please, okay, thank you.
All right, Nancy's on it, she's getting it.
All right, team, we are going to start in about fifteen seconds, everybody good? Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's work session and rule development workshop. Our work session has been scheduled for today for the purpose of discussing early reading intervention. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting. No action will be taken, and there will be no pre-agenda period in which the public would normally address the school board on relevant topics that are related to the work of the board. Rule Development Workshop, the second part of today's meeting, is for the purpose of discussing proposed revisions to the following school board policies: IJ instructional materials, IJL, library material selection and adoption, and KEC challenged materials policy. The school board will be hearing public comments on these three policies. Again, because this is not a regularly scheduled workshop, there will be no pre-agenda meeting like we would normally have. Thank you all so much for joining us today. Board members are all attending in person. Member Felder is not here, although I just heard the door open, she is probably walking up as we speak. There she is. I also want to remind the public that board members will not be engaging in outside electronics or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus our attention on the meeting itself. To my fellow board members, staff, and any members of the public that might be speaking, please speak directly into your microphones, make sure they're turned on, so that we can hear them. Our microphones are very sensitive, so if you don't have it right up to your face, we won't hear you. Also, as we begin our meeting, as we do with every meeting, I want to invite you to join us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. All right, Dr. Vazquez, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning. It is my pleasure to present at the request of the board information regarding our early literacy plan. Some of the information is historical and some of it is exciting. We'll be able to share what our plans are moving forward to be able to have a very strong unified early literacy focus in our schools. I'm going to turn it over to Rob Bixler, who is the Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Digital Learning.
And I'm sorry, before we get started, for some reason that sounded very quiet, I was trying to get a read from the audience. Up here it sounds real low, and I have the volume, room volume, all the way up. So, from the back, could you all hear okay? Was it just me? You all could hear okay? Okay, never mind, ignore that.
Good morning, Chair Jacobs, board members, and Dr. Vazquez. Today, we're here to provide information as we address early reading instruction and intervention through One OCPS's roadmap to reading. Before we further explore the how, we would like to speak briefly about the why. There is a need to inform and examine early literacy practices to ensure every student has a promising and successful future. The quotes on this slide call attention to the importance of addressing reading skills early in a child's learning pathway with an emphasis on a systematic approach. At the upcoming Summer Instructional Leadership Institute for Principals and Assistant Principals, author and keynote speaker Dr. Julia Lindsay will share the importance of effective reading strategies and evidence-based reading practices. This roadmap to reading details how we will achieve that goal within OCPS through a collective belief. As we scan early readiness data for kindergartners, we can quickly discern that almost half of our students entering kindergarten are not demonstrating readiness. This trend often continues as they exit third grade. As a district and state, third grade proficiency has been stagnant, leading us to consider what has changed in literacy instruction, what obstacles have we faced as a district, and what is our plan to continue and expand research-based reading practices. Research about third grade reading proficiency has proven a strong correlation between a student's proficiency and their likeliness to graduate high school. According to the American Educational Research Association, a student who cannot read on grade level by third grade is four times less likely to graduate by the age of nineteen. Additionally, seventy percent of all incarcerated adults cannot read at a fourth grade level. With the affirmation facts in mind, it is of the utmost importance that our district focus their efforts on early literacy, particularly teaching foundational skills prior to third grade, screening for early reading difficulties, and providing prompt intervention. In the past, there have been varying approaches to literacy that include whole language and a balanced literacy approach. Whole language instruction, as an example, is based on the philosophy that kids will learn to read naturally if you expose them to a lot of books. Phonics skills were taught, but not explicitly emphasized or systematic in nature. As a result, there was not always a consistent focus on early literacy skill development in favor of comprehension. This often resulted in reactionary plans of remediation and a focus on grade level associated with state accountability systems where clear data points were available. There was also variance in implementation of resources that addressed students' needs. Throughout today's presentation, we will discuss application of current research, an evidence-based approach to literacy instruction in one alignment with the new best standards, and an opportunity for a One OCPS implementation in all of our classrooms. The One OCPS roadmap to reading is an educational shift tied to the research and evidence-based practices that align with the science of reading. The Science of Reading is a vast interdisciplinary body of scientifically-based research about reading and issues related to reading and writing. The research was conducted over five decades and is derived from thousands of studies. The results of this research provide a body of evidence that informs how proficient reading and writing develops, why some students have difficulties, and how we can effectively assess and teach to improve student outcomes through prevention and intervention. Scarbrower's reading rope provides a visual that represents the processes essential for skilled reading as defined within the Science of Reading. The components found in the top and bottom of the rope are equally essential in the development of skilled reading. Reading instruction involves the intricate and intentional blending of automatic and strategic skills. As illustrated in the graphic, the bottom strand of the reading rope includes word recognition. This involves the student's application of phonological awareness, decoding, and sightword recognition. The upper strand of the reading rope includes language comprehension. This includes the student's background knowledge, vocabulary, language structure, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. In summary, the bottom strand of the reading rope includes skills that need to become increasingly automatic for our students, while the upper strand of the reading rope includes skills that are more strategic for our students to learn and apply. A skilled reader has fluent execution and coordination of word recognition and language comprehension.
The conclusive research from the Science of Reading provides us with the information we need to gain a deeper understanding of how we learn to read, what skills are involved, how they work together, and which parts of the brain are responsible for reading development. From this research, an evidence-based practice, best practice, for teaching foundational literacies called structured literacy was conceptualized. This approach emphasized highly explicit and systematic teaching of all literacy components. Structured literacy is the pathway of implementation for the Science of Reading. John Hattie's Visible Learning research studied the greatest influences on student achievement, and an effect size of .4 indicates one year of growth over one year's time. Anything beyond a .4 effect size indicates over a year's growth in a year's time. The chart shows the minimal effect the whole language approach has on student achievement as .06. In comparison, encoding programs, direct instruction, and phonics instruction have larger effect sizes that exceed .4, most notably phonics instruction at .70, and MTSS 1.29 has significantly higher effect sizes. These results highlight the need to provide targeted instruction and appropriate intervention for students. These influences fall under the structured literacy umbrella. Although not highlighted on the slide, collective efficacy has an effect size of 1.57. If we define this further, collective efficacy is a group's shared belief that united actions can influence student outcomes and increase achievement for all students. This will be an important consideration as we establish a common understanding of literacy within OCPS. The OCPS implementation of structured literacy approach aligns with the Florida's formula for success. This includes the six components of reading: oral language, phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension; four types of assessment: screening, progress monitoring, diagnostic, and summative; along with three tiers of instruction, commonly referred to as MTSS. During the 21-22 and 22-23 school years, Florida transitioned to the best standards. These standards, based on the Science of Reading and structured literacy, include a progression of foundational benchmarks, which support the use of systematic, explicit, sequential, and cumulative teaching practices that include multi-sensory approaches. In grades K through 5, foundational benchmarks are embedded within Tier 1 instruction. Students not demonstrating progress are identified as needing additional layers of support through Tier 2 and Tier 3: instruction and intervention. Although not the focus of today's presentation, the 6 through 12 foundational reading intervention standards were also added to support secondary students who have not yet acquired the essential skills to read fluently with comprehension. Within the next two slides, we will capture the One OCPS approach to structured literacy and how all of these pieces will affix to one another. The interdisciplinary body of the scientifically-based research, referred to as the Science of Reading, has shed light on how the brain creates neurological connections in order for people to develop as readers. So we may ask ourselves, how do we implement what we have learned through the Science of Reading? We have learned that structured literacy approach to reading instruction allows teachers to explicitly address essential skills, concepts, and the sequence of instruction to facilitate literacy learning. A structured literacy program has five characteristics. It is explicit, systematic, cumulative, sequential, and multi-sensory. In order to address the full scope of the reading rope and align our instruction to the current research, OCPS has provided resources that address both strands of the reading rope. To foster the word recognition strand, we have provided three main curricula that aligns with the Science of Reading: Hagerty, Being a Reader, and SIPs. The Hagerty curriculum focuses on the development of phonemic awareness skills for grades VPK to 2nd, and is delivered within the core instruction. Being a Reader, which will be available for all schools during the 23-24 academic year, integrates foundational and comprehension strategies through structured literacy lessons aligned with the Orton-Gillingham approach, OG. This resource will enable teachers to provide differentiated, small-group instruction in Tier 1. SIPs, systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words, is a structured literacy intervention program that shares alignment to Being a Reader and the OG approach. In order to better support our learners, having an intervention curriculum that is aligned to the core instruction is beneficial. Our district-created curriculum resource materials, or CRMs, have been designed to encompass both the word recognition strand by providing daily phonics instruction, as well as language comprehension strand by building on comprehension skills, vocabulary, and background knowledge. Ancillary resources included in the Wonders curriculum, such as supplemental readers, provide additional opportunities for the development of reading skills. Lastly, the Scholastic Bookroom provides a wide variety of text that supports the development of vocabulary, fluency, comprehension, and background-building skills. Structured literacy is a term created to help unify the names of the research approaches to reading, including Orton-Gillingham, OG, phonics-based reading instruction, and systematic reading instruction. In OCPS, core and intervention resources are aligned to structured literacy and many key characteristics of Orton-Gillingham. The example on the slide illustrates how the SIPs program and the OG approach align. OCPS has proactively planned and continues to plan for professional development that aligns with the implementation of a structured literacy approach. Professional development opportunities include IMPACT, which stands for Instructional Mastery of Pedagogy and Content Training, in collaboration with the University of Central Florida; the two-day series, Making Sense of Multi-Sensory Instruction; literacy and MTSS coach meetings; and the 40-hour asynchronous reading course. Also, outsourced vendors provide development, such as Hagerty, SIPs, Being a Reader, Wonders, Raz+, support structured literacy across our elementary schools. In addition, the Curriculum and Digital Learning Department, in collaboration with the OCPS Foundation, UCF, and Collaborative Classroom, provide one-to-one tutoring for struggling readers through the Read to Succeed program. Roughly eighty paid, grant-funded tutors, which include UCF College of Education students, provide support using the SIPs curriculum within our K1 students. Additionally, hundreds of unpaid volunteers also provide reading instruction through the traditional Read to Succeed curriculum focusing on vocabulary and comprehension. Partnerships also have been formed for ongoing professional development. OCPS collaborates with AIM Pathway, which is an IDA, Intellectual, I'm sorry, Internationally Dyslexia Association accredited program, which affords opportunities for teachers, coaches, administrators, district leaders, and learning community leaders to deepen knowledge of structured literacy, the Orton-Gillingham approach, and strategies of implementation in the classroom. Pathways to Proficient Reading is for educators and reading specialists and focuses on the why behind structured literacy and extends the entire reading rope. Pathways to Structured Literacy is based on the Orton-Gillingham approach and provides educators the opportunity to further their knowledge and skills in the Science of Reading. Pathways to Literacy Leadership for education leaders and administrators interested in best practices in reading instruction and seeking to introduce a culture of literacy into their school. Pathways to Proficient Writing is designed for educators that are committed to learning about the connection between writing research, theoretical models, and best practices for writing instruction in the classroom. The Read Charitable Foundation provides Orton-Gillingham trainings. The Orton-Gillingham classroom-level educators training focuses on the principles and fundamentals of the Orton-Gillingham approach. The graphic above provides an example of the updated 120-minute literacy block for kindergarten. This Tier 1 literacy block outlines the recommended allotted time for each component necessary to develop effective readers. Starting in kindergarten, foundational skills are given top priority. Students start this block with daily phonological awareness instruction. Then, in whole group, the teacher will provide explicit, systematic, sequential, and cumulative phonics instruction. Taking into consideration developmentally appropriate instructional practices, the teachers will then shift into small-group instruction. During this time, students will partake in strategic, planned, for, and targeted centers that cover literacy skills from phonological awareness, phonics, comprehension, fluency, writing and response to reading, and oral language development. The teacher-led table will provide opportunities for teachers to differentiate instruction. These planned, small-group lessons allow use of the Being a Reader curriculum, Scholastic Bookroom text, or other selected appropriate texts to anchor instruction that help students build a bridge from foundational skills to comprehension. After the allotted time dedicated to small- After the allotted time dedicated to small group instruction, the teacher will return to whole group instruction to target comprehension, vocabulary, and oral language development. The OCPS CRMs provide best-aligned, text-dependent questions that allow for students to think critically about text. Lastly, the literacy block will close with writing instruction that allow students to apply phonics and communication skills.
To amplify the impact of structured literacy, identifying students' reading needs in grades K and 1 will ensure we are taking a proactive approach to address the early literacy skills needed to become proficient in reading. This includes predicting significant reading difficulties, PSRD. To accomplish this, we must have the data to drive instructional decisions. Screening all students for early reading skills is the first step in a process to ensure students receive timely instruction and intervention to meet their needs. The Florida Department of Education has introduced statewide progress monitoring, Florida Assessment for Student Thinking, or FAST, that yields big-picture trends aligned to grade-level benchmarks. However, there is an additional need to screen specific areas that identify students that are predicted to have significant reading difficulties if a change in instruction does not occur. Screeners also identify potential deficits in the areas of phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, and word recognition. The brief assessments will further identify students who have deficits in early reading skills essential for fluent reading in the future. The results provide next steps for additional assessment and instructional planning, including Students who demonstrate significant reading difficulties struggle with accurate and/or fluent word recognition and have poor encoding and decoding abilities. Also, students who are at risk for dyslexia struggle in the same areas. Therefore, early intervention using a structured literacy approach should be employed for all students. The course of action based on the science of reading is parallel to differing degrees. Research supports that early identification and intervention are critical to positive impacts on students' reading outcomes and emotional well-being and play a significant role in preventing incidences of reading difficulties. The flowchart above depicts the recommended timeline for screening early reading skills in OCPS. DIBELS, which stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, will be used as the universal screener for predicting significant reading difficulties at the beginning, middle, and end of the year for students in grades K and 1. DIBELS was identified as the universal screener for OCPS to allow further analysis of the state FAST mentioned on Slide 20. Research concludes that subtests within DIBELS correlate with being able to predict significant reading difficulties, including dyslexia. An additional benefit is DIBELS is administered in a format where teachers listen to students as they are assessed, and the subtests are short, one-minute measures. If the results are strong, students will continue to receive core ELA instruction with differentiation as needed. For students that receive results that indicate a weakness in one or more areas, further diagnostic measures should be given. These measures will confirm a deficit exists and provide a pathway for instruction and intervention in the greatest area of need. Throughout the development of OCPS's screening guide, CDL collaborated with UCF early childhood and special education experts, JustReadFlorida, and the OCPS Special Education Department. The next step in the process is utilizing diagnostic measures for decision-making. If a student is identified as having some risk or is at risk after completing the universal screener for PSRD, or predictor of significant reading difficulties, they will receive additional diagnostic measures to confirm a deficit and provide a data-driven path for future instructional decisions. Diagnostic measures for early reading skills will assess specific components of reading, such as phonological and phonemic awareness, phonics skills, or fluency. These are more specific assessments for at-risk readers, so intervention can be tailored to the greatest area of need. These assessments will also inform schools of the skills students know and those they still need to learn, ensuring they are provided the most appropriate multi-tiered system of response. OCPS has created reading assessment guides for grades K through 10. The above resource is specifically for grades K and 1. This guide provides specific diagnostic measures in essential skill areas, along with a decision flowchart. This document can be utilized as a next step once all students are screened to gain further information for instructional planning. As mentioned earlier, it is important that all students are provided high-quality instruction based on a structured literacy approach during core instruction. However, for those students identified as having predictors of significant reading difficulties, additional instruction and intervention in the greatest area of need must be provided. In grades K and 1, students may not have a one- or two-year learning gap. However, it is vital we shift to intervening early and often to ensure the achievement gap is closed rather than widened over time. The chart on this slide offers an additional view of OCPS's resources to facilitate structured literacy across tiers one, two, and three, which include evidence-based interventions.
In order to close the achievement gap evident in our current data, it is imperative that actionable changes are made to the way we teach and monitor foundational reading skills in early grades. By providing an early reading skills screener to our kindergarten and first-grade students and utilizing the data collected to ensure timely support, we are cultivating their success as they become effective readers. We feel like Dr. Anita Archer's quote sums up the importance of our one OCPS roadmap to reading plan. There is no comprehension strategy powerful enough to compensate if a student cannot read the words.
Now, we'll turn it back to the superintendent for comments, the school board questions, and discussion.
And we're sure that concludes our presentation. Now, we are prepared to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, thank you. First, let me just start by thanking you all. I know, probably speaking for most of the board, I've been looking forward to this. It's such a critical, critically important issue for our students, and understanding the science and how far we have evolved in terms of learning how to teach is exciting and encouraging. So let me start with Member Salamanca.
Sorry, Board, that was on chair before I got here, so. I think I was in line before I arrived.
Okay, so you'll pass for now?
I will pass for now.
I'm sorry, Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, and thank you so much for your preparation. I always enjoy when Mr. Bixler comes and shares with me about the wonderful things we're doing with reading, this whole idea, the science of reading. And I looked at the template and what he, you know, his group presented today, and I was just thrilled. A couple of things that I want to just sort of emphasize or share my thoughts. I've never known OCPS to not have wonderful, innovative programs academically. Even as a teacher, beginning teacher, I saw some things that was just exciting, and now as a board member, I'm yet seeing it. This whole thing with phonics and phonemic work, you know, we were taught phonics, and when I had this conversation, and I said, oh, God, we're going back to phonics. This is a great endeavor, the setup, and most educators were always in this conversation, whether or not it's progression or proficiency. We want proficiency, but we'll be happy with progression. But if this template, if it is followed, we will get proficiency, we will. So to the fact of the teachers that are going to be working, we have to make sure that they are presented with the environment, learning environment is conducive for them to exercise this particular method. Behaviors and all of that has to be intact, because a child can be taught to read, but they're taught in different levels. In this particular template you're presenting, you can teach them, it offers those different levels so that the child can experience some type of proficiency, not just progression, but some type of proficiency. Thirdly, we do have programs in communities. I know we got one coming in, the Smith Center Superintendent, and Bakari did share that funds will be available so that maybe people can come in and give the teachers the time. Summertime is wonderful, they have time, they're not in any time restraints, to really teach children how to read. I'm so excited that this program, that we're going to do it, and based on what you shared with me, my own little research looking, it works. It works, but it can only work in an environment that's conducive so that teachers, everybody's got to be on board, and I share that with you. APs, teachers, reading, everybody across the gamut of subject areas, math, science, history, English, everybody has got to be on board with this template, so that reading proficiency can occur on every level. So in closing, I just want to thank you for your research and presenting this to us, and the fact that this district is not giving up on teaching children how to read. That is so important. I want to thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. The Chair had to step out, so I'll be chairing the meeting until she gets back in a second. I'm actually up next to speak, and I just have a few questions. First off, thank you for this great work. I know the board's been discussing the science of reading for a while, and explicitly dyslexia and the need for us to look at dyslexia, screen for dyslexia, and then get those interventions in at an earlier time, because by third grade, it's too late. By third grade, we're retaining, and that's not the outcome that we want. So I so appreciate all the work that you're doing on that. I do have a few questions. So we talked about, first off, the training involved, because while this isn't, like, the science of reading isn't new, the reading wars have been around for decades, the training involved to get us to where we are in this presentation, where are we with our teachers? How well-trained are they in this process so that it will be kind of seamless? Because we know that they're burnt out, they're stressed out, and I just want to make sure that they're prepared to implement this type of programming.
Sure. So globally, we provide professional development all year long, and in the summertime, we actually started with the Best Institute last summer that began to talk about the science of reading, those foundational skills. A couple of numbers that I have, for SIPs, we've already trained around 2,000 teachers already. For Being a Reader, we've trained around 160. IMPACT, which is training during the year, we've trained 953 teachers. Orton-Gillingham, we trained 525 teachers. Haggerty's 1,100 teachers. AIM Pathways is around 1,100 as well. So this has been ongoing for about two years, and so while, you know, COVID kind of got in the way, we didn't stop the transition. We've been using, luckily for us, those federal dollars with SIR has really helped us focus on this and use these funds for training. So we have more training coming. I think when Ms. Felder and I spoke, you know, one of the things that she pressed upon, I know you've mentioned this too, is our administrators being trained also. And so that's part of why in June, when we have the Instructional Leadership Institute, it's strictly on reading, the science of reading and what our administrators need to know, so they can encourage their teachers and provide more training for their teachers. And so training has been ongoing. We have set aside dollars again for this summer for more training. We'll have IMPACT ongoing next year. So this is an ongoing training that we're going to be continuing to do for our coaches, our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers. It's going to be over the course of time, but what's nice is we already have the resources already at the school. We purchased them, they're already there. So it's just a matter of us continuing to train, train, and train. You're right, it's going to take some time, but the resources are there to do it.
Awesome, thank you. And then we talked, you talked a lot about DIBELS and the screeners and the testing, and in looking at that chart, it appears that we've got a lot, we've got a lot going on in kindergarten and first grade. So could you please just walk me through what that will look like, the amount of time it'll take to do the screening for the student, for the teacher? Again, I'm very mindful of our teachers' needs and their full plates.
Sure.
So can you just kind of walk me through what that looks like and the time that will be allotted to do this good work?
I will, and I'm going to give you a very vague answer for a reason. Dr. Vazquez has charged us, working with Dr. Armbruster, to take a look at all those assessments that are going on in the kindergarten and first-grade classrooms and see what we can take off their plate, because we feel that putting a student on a product for 30 minutes, 20 minutes, do those things need to go away? And we focus more on that face-to-face interaction, hearing kids read. A minute here, a minute there may provide more bang for the buck down the road. So she's charged us, and actually in Cabinet, for Dr. Armbruster and the team to sit down and go through what's on a kindergarten teacher's plate, first grade teacher's plate, and see what we can take off as far as assessments, and to weave this in instead. So that's the next phase of this, excuse me, over the next couple of weeks.
Wonderful, and I look forward to a report back to the board on what we've been able to take off their plate, because I think that's vitally important. So the testing, can you just, can you tell me how much time will be allotted, like, testing? Because we know that most of these, I believe, is done via iPad or via computer. So when we look at the state mandated testing for K and 1, and then what we need to add in to make sure that we're screening children, which is important for any reading deficiencies, what's the time allotted and what does that look like?
You want to speak to the DIBELS? Go ahead.
So for DIBELS specifically in kindergarten, at maximum, the students would be given four one-minute assessments, and those are provided one-on-one, teacher-facing. And in first grade, it's maximum five minutes.
And so like when we're giving the DIBELS, I know that I used to do DIBELS when my kids were little, like, as a volunteer, I would come in and help with the DIBELS testing. Is that something that will be allowed, like, can parents come in and help the teacher with the DIBELS testing?
Yeah, that's what we look at for sure.
Thank you. All right, and I'll come back around because my time is up. Thank you so much for this great work.
All right, next we'll hear from Member Gold.
Thank you. I'm very excited about the direction we're going in the multi-use, and I just want to highlight some things that you said. You know, I was part of that K-ready community in 2021 where we were really working with early childhood development and many in the community in trying to lift a lot of this. And I don't think most people really realize that 90% of our kids' brains are developed by the time they hit kindergarten, and so we're already behind the curve if they haven't had that early learning. So some of my questions, I'm going to work backwards. Let's start with the early learning. How are we working with our collaborators and partners so that they're on the same page for the kids that we don't see in VPK or with organizations we might not or may work closely with for that early childhood development? That's my first question. I'll get them all out. That's my first question. My second question is expanding upon that, because, you know, I look at Slide 14. My second question is expanding upon that because, you know, I look at Slide 4 and frankly, it depresses me. You know, we just are not making strides for all the efforts that we've been putting in, in moving the needle on this. And while we absolutely need to solve the problem at those early years, we have a lot of kids in the pipeline right now that are struggling. And how are we going to connect with them to really improve their skills? Because what we've been doing doesn't work. Breaking out and taking them to the library just doesn't work. So how do we do that better with your rope methodology? And tell me about that multisensory, because I think that may be key. And, and my last question is, how do we activate those partners that are seeing those kids? The Boys and Girls Clubs, the all, after-school All-Stars, our faith-based partners that operate after-school programs, not only on our campuses but off our campuses, and are helping with those kids that are going back to their neighborhoods at younger ages? So those are, those are, I think, my, my questions for now, so.
So I can answer a couple of them. You know, with the, with the partners, after-school partners, I think that would be an, an area or before-school partnerships. That'd be an area where we would probably need to share with them what we're doing and see what flexibility they have to kind of follow along with us. I know that we have a great partnership with the early learning, with the Early Learning Coalition with Scott Fritz, so we can definitely reach out to him. VPK for OCPS, we do have some numbers about VPK. You want to share with VPK?
Yeah, I know, and I don't want to stop. I love the bragging, but I only have two minutes left. So I, and I, and I love what you've done, so I don't want to diminish that. But I really want to know how we activate those partners and how we bring them to the table and actually get them to commit to train on what we're training on.
So I think, yeah. So I think the easy answer would be to share the presentation with them because we know who they are. And I think spending some time with them to share with them the science of reading, just like we did with UCF. We spent time with, at UCF with their English department and we gave a presentation to them so they know what we're focusing on. So as they begin to work with their classroom teachers coming to us, they kind of have a foundation. So I think that same kind of model could work with those product, with those providers, like the YMCA, the after-school ASP, Boys and Girls Club. We could definitely do that kind of partnership with them as well. So I think that's a great takeaway from this meeting is to spend time with them, talking about what they can do. Can they resource, can they use their funds to support training? Can we support their training? I think that's a great takeaway for us to do. I think for, well, the presentation was on early literacy. I want to make sure that we're all aware that we're not, not focusing on secondary as well. The program that we're talking about, we're also doing that at the middle school and high schools. So, you know, we have programs that are structured literacy that focus on phonemic awareness, phonics foundations, scaffold.
Tell me how it's delivered though. That's what I mean. I, I get the educational component, but I want to know, how are you connecting the kids to this? Are they learning how to put together a robot through reading? What's the multisensory part of that?
Multisensory.
Sure. So the multisensory piece is twofold. One, with the primary educations that we're talking is the multisensory is part of the structured literacy approach. So we have invested in multisensory kits. So the resources are in the teachers' classrooms and we've written, written multiple grants. So those pieces are happening. Then also within the structured literacy approach, example SIPs, those have multisensory components which have different movements, tracing letters, things along those lines as well that are put in there as well. So it's kind of that connection to the brain, to the, the movement with the different actions.
So I have a suggestion, even though my time is up. Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I think especially in the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, they get excited about learning vocational things, whether it's how to change the oil in a car, build a boat, like they were doing it, gotha, planting a garden, whatever that is that they're into. I learned how to make a lamp out of a beer can. Whatever that is that they, that they are into, if the reading and the sensory thing, plus they learn a skill that can go towards CTE. So the more we can combine that skills-based experiential learning that puts them on a path to credits, we were at the, no, I'm over, I'm sorry.
You are. You're breaking the rules.
I know, I'm sorry. I don't do it very often.
I know.
All right, one last thing. When we were at the gang unit last night and, and that presentation, which was fabulous, thank you to the, to the team that put that together. But I'm thinking, what are the alternatives for these kids? What are they learning? If they can't read, they act out and they don't feel like they have anywhere to go, right? If we're not teaching them.
You're going to have a chance. We're going to come back around. This isn't the last word, okay? It sounds like a great follow-up five minutes that we're looking forward to. And I hadn't heard about making, was it beer cans out of?
Yeah, that's in my middle school.
Okay. Let's hear from Member Ferrant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much for what you're doing. I really am so thankful to the district for focusing on early reading and helping our kids to read, especially through the pandemic. I think we're, we're looking at kids who really are struggling right now with, you know, the teachers with masks on or different things like that, that really dropped that literacy rate. And so I'm excited for what is to come and what we're doing. I also, just in our, you know, private conversation, meeting, I'm really thankful that you guys took the time to go meet with, was it UCF that you, okay? And how you're helping them to see, hey, this is the need. Could you teach this when you're teaching our teachers how to be teachers? So I thank you for that because that is truly the, every school visit that I've been to and I've been able to reach out to our teachers and talk with them, one of the biggest things they said is this OG training has been transformational. They, every one of, I literally have not met one that said, no, I mean, it really wasn't anything I needed. But every one of them said, why didn't we learn this in school? Why did, you know, as a teacher, not in kindergarten, whatever, but that too. So in that, with that, you know, I'm a big fan of OG. I've really, I've listened to the Reed Foundation, I've heard their heart, and then I'm seeing it in practice. It's working. On one of the slides towards the end, it was talking about resources for Tier 1 through 3. Is that just for kids who are struggling? Let's see, if I can find it. Slide 27. Just because I don't see anything with OG in here. If it is there, if you wanted to show me, because I think, I know that there's, like, go ahead.
So within the slide, so Tier 1 is your core instruction. So that's all of the above. So Orton Gillingham is the approach to the utilization of these materials. So that's the whole structured literacy when we talked about explicit, systematic, cumulative, sequential, multisensory. So Orton Gillingham is the approach in addressing those pieces. So when a teacher attends an OG training or a teacher attends an AIM training that has OG elements in it, or they're using products, these are the tools to help the teacher when they go back to the classroom, take that approach and understanding that they gained. So now I have some tools in the classroom that I can use to deliver that, that approach.
Okay, okay, perfect. That makes more sense. I think I would love to see our district training every one of our kindergarten, first, second, third grade teachers in OG. And I know that SIPs is great and Hegarty is great and those are then, you know, resources. But OG, I actually just spoke with a teacher this past week at one of my school visits. She was moved from one school to a new school. At the new school, they taught OG or whatever, they use OG. And her daughter actually has struggled in reading. She held her back in first grade because of her reading. She couldn't read, could not write, didn't know any of her, like really struggling. She's now in second grade, goes to this new school. The only difference was the OG approach. She's now reading, writing, and like soaring. Those are the stories that I say, yes, whatever we can do, whatever resources, funding that we need to put into training all of our teachers, and I know it's expensive, but if there's grants we can find, if there's, you know, I know Reed Foundation has been phenomenal with this and they really have a heart for this. But I, I really believe that's our key to success. And I think that was all of my, I was going to ask about DIBELS, but I'm glad that you asked about that. So that was really helpful. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Ferrant. Before we take the next board member, let, allow us here for a minute from the Superintendent.
I just want to respond about OG. And it is a phenomenal strategy that fits within the science of reading. Our team has met with them. We have had some concerns about some of the implementation of some of those strategies, especially when it comes to maybe children who are fluent readers. I know that the team did meet with OG, the Reed Foundation, they've talked about those concerns and I think we're on the same, on the same page right now. And certainly our team can give you more information about OG. They've gone through and have done an analysis of what is available through OG and the other areas that we have. I don't want to give the message that OG is a one-size-fits-all because it's not. And that's what we get into that habits. It works for a child and it may have been what this particular child needed, but it may not be what another child needs. And that's why it's so important that we help our teachers become proficient in diagnosing through the DIBELS so that they understand, is it a phonemic awareness issue? Is it phonological awareness? So that they are getting the right strategies. And certainly, if you have a child that's reading fluently, I question whether they should be going through phonemic awareness exercises. You probably need to look at literacy, comprehension strategies at that higher level. That's not to say that you may not have fifth graders, sixth graders, or higher, that have those gaps, that they would use strategies like that, but not an entire class, which is some of the things that we were seeing. But again, we're on the same page. I see them nodding, they had a meeting, and I think all is good.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Member Byrd.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. You know how passionate I am about this subject. So I'm, I'm thrilled that we are having this presentation today. Thank you for all of your hard work with this. If, as, as you mentioned, you know, research in reading, the science of reading has changed significantly. And for those of us that, you know, have, were trained in the last 20 years or 25, 30 years, we've seen it. You know, we, we came from, when I was in college, I was taught, you know, the whole language approach. And, and now we're seeing much more of an emphasis on the decoding and phonemic awareness and how important that is, that, as your last quote said, that's kind of the precursor to being able to comprehend anything. They have to be able to read the words, right? So I'd like to, I have a question on Page 17, when you have the sample kindergarten reading schedule. Since we are kind of, we've looked at data, we see that over the last several years, we haven't made gains that we'd wanted to see with reading instruction. And now we have more research saying we need more phonemic awareness. Can you tell me how this example of a literacy block in kindergarten is different from what we had been doing in the past so that we can see some changes? How, how would this, maybe some examples of how this might be a little different than what we were doing?
So when we shifted over to the best standards, it brought in more foundational skills. So it was not always an acceptable practice to walk into even a primary classroom and see possibly a table that was using foundational skills. Because a lot of us have a mental model of we're looking at an apple and we're saying the letter A, when really it's much more methodical, there's deeper research on that. So it was twofold. One is we always had a 90-minute reading block or 120-minute reading block. So one of the discussions we had was to really take a deep dive into that, rolling out the best standards to the full extent. So there was a gradual progression of those foundational skills. Because if you went from none or 1% to 50%, that would be very shocking to even an instructor in the classroom. The information that we're presenting today, the trainings that administrators have gone through, the teachers are going through, you're seeing the buy-in and, hey, we need more of this time. So this literacy block, you'll see additional foundational skills. There is a further definition of, you know, it's great, we bought multisensory kits, but where do you use them? So we did these for each of the primaries, so I know when to use that kit, you know? So now I know where to put these resources, these tools that we're investing in, that teachers will have, so as they're trained, they can have those implementations.
Got it. Okay, so like when you see the whole group phonological awareness, whole group phonics, and then the small groups, you might have in the past seen maybe read aloud with, you know, comprehension strategies, that kind of thing. You wouldn't have seen those specific strategies being used. Good. All right. I was just going to ask about Read to Succeed, that program. When we spoke about this, about finding ways to promote it and how we need a different, we talked about it up here, we need a different approach. What we have been doing isn't working, we need more hands on deck. How can we promote it in such a way that we can push it out to the community and get community, because I have numerous groups in my community that, you know, have come forward and said, you know, how can we help the schools, you know, what do we need? I, I feel like if we make this a priority in our district, that this is a huge focus of ours, this early reading development, early literacy development. How can we promote this volunteer program where we could get so many more volunteers in? And also using our high school students, as I said, for community service in the afternoons for them to come and do it. And staff members, how can we promote this among our non-instructional even staff members? I had one school that brought their letter grade up, like two letter grades. And one of the ways they did it was they had every staff member at that school mentoring and tutoring a student, even from custodians to principal, you know? So is, is there, is that something we could look at doing, really promoting that program?
Yeah, again, I think that goes back to Ms. Gould's comment. You know, I think we need to get out in front of some of these organizations and just simply share a, maybe a modified, toned-down version of the presentation about what we're trying to focus on. I think we can. And I've been talking with Dr. Bradshaw and Professional Learning. We have PELs that could be an opportunity to train PELs, just so they're aware of what we're doing. So we're all, we're looking at multiple ways to get this information out. And when we have opportunities to, to train, we're going to train, at least even for awareness or actually, you know, having them assist us. So we're trying to be as very creative as you can. The high school suggestion, we took notes on that as well. So I think part of it is that we make this transition, now it's become more of a presentation to you all. We can find any opportunity to stand out in front of a Rotary Club and talk about early literacy. You know, I was at Killarney, I had a Rotary, a club that came to my school and helped me all the time, the adults did. And so I'm, I know there's organizations, as long as you talk to them about what you want, they'll, they'll be there. So I think, you know, that's a great takeaway from both of you to go, to where can we reach out to these partners and say, hey, can you help us with this? We can fix this early on, we're going to take care of a lot of things down the road.
Absolutely. Chambers of Commerce is too.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you. I'll log back in.
Wonderful, thank you. Member Castro-Deney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for this overview, I appreciate it. And I know that we've had a, a big achievement gap that's been very stagnant for years and it's been really hard to close that gap. We've tried so many different things and it seems like this, it's not just a, a new emphasis on phonics and more phonics is going to do it. It's because we've discovered there's another approach to teaching phonics. We used to teach letters and match the sounds, whereas if we start with the sounds and kind of match the letters, and it's a whole different way that kids can connect. So I'm excited that we're, we're looking at this. And I, like, Member Byrd, where I was also trained in whole language and balanced literacy and I, I loved teaching reading. I was often fortunate to have students who were strong readers. And if they weren't, a lot of their parents got them tutoring. So, so the weaknesses in our approach were not always evident because they were taken care of outside. But for so many parents who don't have the resources, that's where we're seeing these delays or problems. So I'm, I'm really glad that we're going to take this deep dive and this look, and I appreciate the work. And I, I know that a lot of teachers who are currently teaching will need a lot of instruction and, because it's, it's a mindset too for the teachers and wait, there's something different, there's a different approach. So I know it's not going to be. So I know it's not going to be an easy overnight fix. But I think this is, this is really important. And I appreciate that you all have really brought this to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Castro-Denell. Member Salomon?
Okay, now I'm ready. And thank you for the presentation. I was like taking notes. I was like, I haven't cut off yet all my questions. But, you know, this is, this is so exciting to see us going this direction. I think I had a lot of the similar questions on how we're supporting our teachers on training and facilitating that learning for themselves as well. My other question, I think I've seen this from reading on how other states have implemented this. And some of the areas of concerns there have been gaps between how well implemented it gets through some schools with better resources than not and how sometimes it creates more confusion and even bigger gaps sometimes. So I'm just curious on how like we as a, we as a district are handling, you know, different schools, different demographics. We have a lot of young teachers who are not just new to this, but new to teaching. So just, just wondering what we're doing there.
So for resources, you know, I will say we're, have been very beneficial that ESTR has allowed us to quickly pivot and provide resources across all schools. They, they don't have to ask us for resources. We buy them for them. So we have been in the last several years, purchased them. And that's what, again, Dr. Vasquez and Dr. Armbruster have asked for some consistency. And so consistency is making sure every school, every teacher has the exact same information and the exact same resources. So no matter where you are in the district, you have what you need. And so we've continued to use that formula with Haggardies or SIPs or being a reader. We've leveraged those ESTR dollars to get those out to schools. We've also used ESTR dollars to provide training. We'll continue to do training. ESTR is one forum. We've got Title II, Title III, it was all kinds of dollars that we can use. So we don't, we're not expecting training to go away. When ESTR goes away, we're just leveraging those now. But training has been something that my department's done consistently since I've been in this role. And so we believe in the power of the classroom teacher. If they're trained and they're, they feel confident, then kids are going to learn. So we'll continue that. We're going, we have no, there's no reason not to continue this. And so luckily for us, we've been doing that for two years now. The numbers, we have a lot more numbers to go, but we'll continue to provide training. And so substitutes, our department covers substitutes for some of our trainings as well. So any way that we can leverage our federal dollars or our grant dollars, we're going to continue to do that. Because we believe in this as well, that the more teachers we train, the more confident they become, the more confident our kids will become as readers as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Vice Chair, Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few follow-ups. So circling back to OG. We, there was, I believe, a couple of years ago, there were seven schools that we kind of piloted the program in. We tried to get training. I know the Reed Foundation was huge in helping us with that endeavor. I know that some schools just do to just, not the need, but the desire to do OG, did it with a little bit more fidelity than others. And that, we've talked up here at this dais about the results that we've seen from those. So those schools that currently have OG or using OG, they'll still be allowed to use it in this, this like, because I know it's not in the hierarchy of the MTSS, but there'll still be, if applicable and useful, they'll still be using OG in those instances. Is that correct?
So we are going to first ensure that everyone is following the plan that we've put in place. One of the things that we have found is the inconsistency we're seeing is because there is such an inconsistency in the delivery of reading instruction across the district. And so as I mentioned before, OG is one, one piece of it. And so if it's being used in accordance with our plan, yes. But there will be some things that we are standardizing. Because we, we know, based on the science of reading, what works and what doesn't work. And being able to have those schools do the pilot allowed our team to go out, to visit, to talk with teachers and administrators. All of that was taken into account when this plan was put into place. But there will not be as much flexibility as there has been in the past in the early literacy program.
And then just to circle back to Member Gould's point, when we're looking at our partners and our after-school networks, I think it's important, if we can, to offer, not just give them the training capability, but give them resources that they can use. We have a lot of, you know, morning programs, afternoon programs, that we could hopefully help, give them the resources to help them with students. I think that would be very beneficial. I also think that we have downtimes within our system. We're busing two routes. We have kids that come early. They're sitting around for 30 minutes. Or at the end of the day, at one of my elementary schools, they're waiting for 30 minutes for that bus to come. It's become disruptive and discipline has ensued, not only in the hallways, but on the buses. And so that 30 minutes, why can't we be utilizing that? Even if we only had 10 minutes? Is there something that we could do within that time, especially with our struggling readers, to put them in the library? Give them something fun to do, but it's still educational? We don't want to stress these kids out. But just by utilizing that time better, I think that we could have better outcomes. We're going to be discussing school start times probably here, not before long. That's another opportunity where we're going to have gaps in our day that we might be able to utilize. And then lastly, and I have, I agree with Member Frant, and I think that was about the OG, what you said, so thank you. The data, when you look at the data, we do very well in early, early learning. Like we were above the state averages in early learning. And I'm ignoring the numbers from COVID. But when you jump to third grade, we're below state average. So somewhere between kindergarten and third grade, we're losing children or we're losing their proficiency, we're losing their knowledge. So I'm so happy that we're, and I, and I think that speaks to the superintendent's need for consistency, because she's looking at that data too. And she's trying to implement programs that work so that we can be consistent, so that we're not losing the kids or our data does not go down in third grade. So I'm excited about this. I, I'm excited to see what the data looks like in two years when it's been implemented with fidelity. I suspect that those numbers will come up and we'll have more proficient readers. And I think that's the goal of the entire board. So thank you again. I just do want to give a huge shout out to the Reed Foundation because they have been an excellent partner. And I've met with them several times. And just the knowledge that they've imparted on me made me want to dig a little deeper, made me want to look into the science of reading. I've listened to countless podcasts, more than I can tell you about, which is why I know comprehension is a huge part of the science of reading. And that's what was left out 20 years ago when we did the science of the reading. We didn't, we didn't make that connection and that correlation. So again, just thank you, kudos. And I'm excited to have this conversation in two years to see what the data, what it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. You may have covered this, but on the training for our teachers, is that mandatory training or is that optional training?
It's optional.
I, I know that, I know I'm going down a territory that we have to bargain over, I'm sure. Dr. Vasquez?
So we're in, this was our first step, presenting this information to you. Our next steps are to meet with the Classroom Teachers Association and talk about how we're rolling out the training. And as Mr. Bixler pointed out, we have been training on this for quite a while. And we've got some teachers out there who are doing this. They're model classrooms, which we will tap into as well. We obviously believe that if you are invested and you believe in it, the training is going to have a much better impact. And so after the conversations with the Classroom Teachers Association, we'll be able to have a better feel as to how we're going. The goal is that all teachers have this knowledge to be able to deliver the standards and help our children read by the time they are in second grade. We have in the past required training. It's been very, very few times. I think we have some from the state that have been required. And so we, and we also need to look at the capacity of our team. That's why this summer, there are going to be plenty of opportunities for teachers to get paid to have the training. We know that's not always a possibility. Many of them are not available. So we'll continue to provide that training. Our goal is that all of our teachers will have this training. And we're going to work with Classroom Teachers Association on that.
All right, so, so let me just, I appreciate the answer and the honesty in the answer. Speaking as a parent and knowing when my kids went to school, how very different education was from one class to the next. Curriculum expectations was all over the place. We are, one of our guiding principles is equity. And I just don't know how we can have equity. If we have a reading system that we know is effective and we have children sitting in classrooms that don't have the benefit of that, I just don't know. When we know how critically important reading is, not just for graduation, but for success in life, I just don't, I, I can't get my, my head around how we could not make sure that all of our students have the best possible opportunities. So hopefully, your conversations will be productive. I have a lot of confidence in our teachers and their desire and willingness to see our children succeed. And I have tremendous confidence in our CTA leadership. So I'm going to be optimistic. But there's always a part of me that's going to worry. So I look forward to hearing how that goes. I also am really excited about the comments of Member Bird and Member Gould and their suggestions about pulling in our partners. Had a conversation just over the weekend with CFH La and how they are branching out into schools that weren't normally on their radar screen because they were kind of focused on the schools their kids went to. But they're recognizing that some of our schools that need the help most are not those schools. And so I'm thrilled with their commitment to taking care of all of our kids, not just their, their personal kids. And I could see them being a great asset in this as well. But what I was thinking about as I was listening to you all talk, and I have 43 seconds left, is, and this is maybe a Scott Howard question or challenge, is how, how do we really kick off a campaign that, that gets legs? And we're parents and, yeah, yeah, so I was, and the Communications Committee. How do we really kick off a campaign that communicates? We believe in our kids, but only if we invest in them. And part of it is our time and our talent. And everybody has a role to play. And that includes parents, not just churches and not-for-profits and others. It includes families. So I think that could, I think we could do it. I think we could really do it and get this community excited about what we could, how we could change lives. Thank you. So Member Bird?
Thank you. I love that. I love the idea of the campaign. You all spoke about, you kind of touched on the importance of helping teachers to become dietiticians in reading struggles and giving them that one-on-one, more of that one-on-one time with students. And I know, I was, I was fortunate when I started, I started as a reading specialist. So I was trained in, you know, doing running records with kids, working one-on-one and listening to them read and writing, and writing down all their errors and, you know? And then when I went into the classroom, that was super helpful because I would sit with them and read and listen to them. And when you're documenting all those errors, you really can see where those kids are struggling and how every child is, has different issues they're dealing with, right? So can you kind of share with me how, you said that you're, you're really kind of focusing on that a little bit, you know, helping teachers to have more of that one-on-one time? And you mentioned, you know, the programs and how it's not as powerful as the teachers, right? The one-on-one time with the teachers. So what are some ways that you're doing that or that you're encouraging that?
Well, the DIBELS training will be taking place into this year, into the summer and into next year. So that's, that's to come. Because we want to present that to you all first to make sure we shared with you what the plan would be. The, the way we talk about the literacy block or the reading block, that and how to utilize those times, we talk about that in our trainings, in our impact trainings, our coach or lead trainings, or any trainings that we do, that's always a part of the conversation so they understand the how and how to use their time. This obviously would be a little bit more structured. And like you could, because you noticed on the, on the literacy block, what you can, what you should be doing. And so we would begin to continue to train on that as well. So a lot of this becomes PD, professional development and how you can, because we don't want them to see it as one more thing. It's just to reuse your time in a more efficient and effective way around the science of reading and that structured literacy approach to focus on those students' needs.
Good, okay. And then my last question was just, and I've, I've mentioned this before up here, but about vision issues with kids. And I know that we do vision screenings. At what age do those vision screenings happen? Do we know? Is it better?
Sorry, I don't, I can give you the answer. I just don't know the top of my head. I can find out. I can find out for you.
Yeah, we have to have parent permission. That's a whole nother thing now.
Yeah, I'll find out. I'll find out with the board now.
My concern is for, I think that that's a real vital piece to all of this. I think that there is vision issues, not just, you know, seeing, but like deeper vision issues with convergence issues where the eyes aren't working together with the brain, all that kind of stuff. It's, it's very hard to estimate. I mean, some estimates have it at 6% of the population, up, all the way up to like 25% of the population of kids have these issues that are very undiagnosed. Most kids don't get diagnosed. And then they're just not reading. And that's what happened with my daughter. She was not reading in third grade because of it. And luckily, in a regular vision exam, the eye doctor saw a little twitter in her eyes right at the midpoint. And so he sent us to a specialist and then she went through vision therapy. Whole thing, as soon as she went through the vision therapy, she was reading. So my concern is that we have kids that aren't diagnosed. And, and not just with that, but with other vision issues. So can, is, can we put kind of an emphasis on having those vision screenings done earlier possibly? Because, you know, and, and making teachers aware of things that they can watch out for with students to, you know, with tracking issues. Sometimes you can just ask a child what, what they're seeing. Or, you know, if they're struggling, they're having a lot of eye strain and headaches. And even making families aware, you know, of these things to watch out for. I think that that's something that could help us as we look at different things that affect learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bird. Member Frant?
Thank you. Just to answer that, I believe it's kindergarten and first grade that they do the, only because my kids have been, I know my son, I remember getting those back from kindergarten first, so hopefully that helps. Okay, so just a quick question. Is there any way that we can get the proficiency rate from those schools that were like the pilot schools for OG? That Member Gallo was talking about, there were seven that were the pilot schools. Just to see how were they before, maybe like three or four years prior? And then, you know, how they've been since implementing to date? Just so we can kind of see if there is a difference and, and how that, that's affected that.
We certainly can pull the data. A couple of things to keep in mind. Number one, will you be comparing, comparing different assessments? Because we have best standards. And before it was FSA. Second, the demographics, if I'm not mistaken, of a lot of the schools that were implementing OG may not reflect the demographics of all the schools. So we can look at comparison, if they narrowed the gaps and if proficiencies went out. But that may be difficult because of the timing of their implementation and the test scores. But we'll, our team will work on that.
Perfect, yes. The separating, like narrowing the gap is really what we want to look at and see if it is something that's working and we do see that it, you know, all the schools are doing well with it. I mean, I really, I can't say enough about, and I know not everybody maybe is on the same page with that or feels that it is the, the ticket to success. But I really feel that, you know, from everyone I'm talking to, so it's not just one child or one teacher. It is everywhere that I go, every school that I've been to. If they're using OG, they are blown away by it and just have seen success in all the students in their class. So I'll just, I'll continue advocating for that. But thank you so much for all your, all you're doing.
All right, that concludes Board Member Comments. Dr. Vasquez?
Spike, Mike? Oh, there it goes. Vision for screening is kindergarten first, third, and sixth. Ninth is recommended, but it's not. Ninth is recommended, but it's not, it's not done by our district.
Thank you. All right, team, again, thank you so much for the presentation. Thanks for the great work. Are we ready to move on?
Madam Chair, can we take a five-minute recess so we can set up the microphone for public comment?
Yes, absolutely. That's right, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me a second time. Thank you. And there's what?
Good job, good job. It was good. Yep. We'll get with, we'll get with RAG about the data, I'm not sure about the data.
I think that's pertinent to the discussion. Let's take, let's take a poll.
A parliamentary.
Let me, let me turn to John because we advertised that we were starting a meeting at 10 o'clock. And we had a number of different topics on the meeting, but our meetings have an advertised time that we start and our policy requires people to sign up 15 minutes before the start of the meeting. If I have that wrong.
No, you are correct. And we have, we advertised this for 10. It is a work session first and then the rule development workshop afterwards, but it's all in within the same meeting. Our practice has been you have to be here between 9:45 and 10 o'clock in order to sign up to speak. And the, the policy itself says speaker shall complete a public input period or public comment card, this is policy B E D H, prior to addressing the board and may sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting. And so that has been the consistent practice of this board that when we have a meeting start at 10 o'clock, for anything that happens during that meeting thereafter, you sign up between 9:45 and 10. So in my opinion, if folks did not get here between 9:45 and 10 to sign up to speak, then they have missed their opportunity. Now, I would like to point out for the record, there are ways that they can email you and they have. I believe you got two comments this morning from folks that were emailed to you on this. And remember, this is a rule development workshop. If this policy goes forward on, it'll be May, May the 9th, they will have the opportunity to sign up to speak at that meeting and give their comments at that time as well. So they do have the opportunity to email comments to you before then. They have the ability to speak to you at the actual meeting. But as for today, you had to sign up between 9:45 and 10 o'clock.
Member Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to make the suggestion, A, that we revisit, revisit that policy because I believe when we approved it, after we needed to push the policy forward and after we were going to revisit it to add an electronic way for them to sign up online so that they could do so the day before to kind of eliminate the, what we're discussing right now. That would be my first recommendation. My second recommendation, if that's the case, then work sessions and rule development should be done separately. We should have a time for a work session and then go into rule development because rule development is the time that we are supposed to hear from, from the public. And when we have a long work session prior to that, it makes it difficult for them to sit through everything. I mean, we, we just, we just want to make sure that if some, a member of the public wants to be heard on any given topic for any given reason, that we're doing our very best to accommodate that, that constituent and be transparent. That's my point.
Member Salamanca.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's, it's during the day, a little bit sometimes unreasonable to expect the public to be here for as long as we are all here when the sessions are back to back. So I would also recommend and encourage that change of that policy.
Another approach towards that could be that we put the rule development first. And then nobody has to wait through the workshop. If we do what you all are suggesting, that also changes all of our public hearings, but we put our public hearings ahead of our consent agenda. So I think, and I, as county mayor, I, when I knew there were public hearings and a lot of people, I always tried to put that up front out of respect for citizens that have taken their time to come down here. We signed up for this. They're, they're doing their, what they believe to be their civic duty, but it's above and beyond what is called for. So I would, I think we could do it that easily and then we can have the other conversation about the policy moving forward. Okay? But for the time being, we are going to follow our policy and, but there is a second bite at the apple because this is not the final decision. Huh? May 9th. All right. And I've already announced the rule development workshop and the purpose of it. So with that, Dr. Vasquez, I will, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmerini, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, just to give you the timeline, just for the, and for the public, we have been here countless times at this point on these policies, but we noticed this to CTA and OESPA on the Ides of March, March 15th, 2023. We advertised this on March 19th, 2023. We are today having a rule development workshop. As you know, we had a rule, a work session last week on this. Our school board meeting, if this goes through and you all give consensus today for this to go forward for final adoption, it will be on May the 9th, 2023. Just for the board's information and edification, just had a discussion with one of our members during the break. As you all know, there are certain pieces of legislation going through up in Tallahassee, specifically House Bill 1069, which may make changes and including but not limited to a required form that we have to utilize, including that if a book is challenged, we have to remove it within five days during the pendency of the challenge. I give that to you for informational purposes only. I still think we need to go through with this adoption because quite frankly, we're not quite happy with the posture that we're in without having the policy fully adopted in the way it needs to be. But I just say that for your information, just to, to preview what could be coming ahead. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Bixler, Allison Kibbie and Maury Stragan to go over a policy IJ, instructional resources and materials, policy IJL, library materials, selection and adoption, and policy KEC, concerns about instructional resources. Thanks.
And for the benefit of the public, after we hear from staff with the presentation, we will be taking public comment before board discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Bixler.
Good morning, Chair Jacob, members of the board and Dr. Vasquez. As Mr. Palmerini said, today is a rule development workshop on policies IJ, IJL and KEC. We'll be reviewing the timeline, summary of actions, proposed revisions, next steps and questions and discussion. The tentative schedule, you can see, we are at rule development workshop today and if things go as we hope, we will be up for board approval on May 9th. We will be reviewing IJ instructional material, instructional resources and materials, IJL, library materials and selection and adoption, and, and policy KEC, challenged materials. I will turn it over to Allison Kibbie who will walk us through the changes.
Good morning. Policy IJ is being revised to include language from recently enacted laws and to clarify the process by which a parent or resident of the county can object to the board's adoption of instructional materials. Revisions have been made to the existing policy language to include content formatting and terminology edits consistent with statutory language. We made very minimal revisions to policy IJ since we last met. Essentially, we just included some additional statutory references and I'm scrolling to find them, page four. In section three, we made sure to cite the exact statute for the evaluation of instructional materials. And then I believe we did this in one more area, page eight. Where we again highlighted our consistent use of the word shall rather than may. And those are all of the changes that we made to IJ since the last time that we met to discuss this policy.
Would you like us to keep going, Chair Jacobs, or?
No, we're done with IJ.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any public comments regarding IJ?
So Madam Chair, I'm looking at the cards and I have one that seems to have IJ listed. But as you remember, others list IJL. The one who has IJ listed is last in the order. But as you remember from your policy, you get three minutes total to speak during any given meeting. So I will, I can advance the speaker who has IJ listed on the card if you, if you care for me to do so.
So who, who's here to speak to IJ?
Domencio Barton.
Okay. Mr. Barton.
Well, you know what I just thought about? If it's possible, maybe I should wait until, since I had put all three down, is it possible for me to wait and then just kind of hit all three at the same time? Because if I just hit one and then all the time is gone, I, I probably could just truncate my question, you know, and just do them all at the same time if they, if they're.
So, Mr. Barton, you wanted to speak to all three?
Yes, Madam.
Okay. All right. Let, let me think. Just give me one minute. Let me clarify. So we are having three different policies and members of the public can speak to each of those policies and they have three minutes for each policy.
Not the way I read it. And I'm looking, hold on, hold on. No speakers, so this is directly from your policy. No speaker shall have more than three minutes per meeting to address the board during any public input period or any public comment period. Three minutes per meeting. But I'm, if.
We, we discussed policies last, at the last meeting with general counsel and the difference between how we treat policies and how we treat other public hearings. Where in a regular public hearing, if we have a large number of people, we can reduce the amount of time. But for policies, we must give everyone three minutes. It's always been my understanding that that's per policy. We could have three policies that were on vastly different things. So I believe we've always given people three minutes per policy.
I'll defer to you all on that.
Okay. So, Mr. Barton.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Would you like to take three minutes now to talk to this one and then we'll call you back up on the next one?
I'd appreciate it. I think that's.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Probably you need to have this microphone.
Oh, okay.
Okay, no problem.
If that's okay. Thank you, sir. Although that one I get to raise and lower.
All right. Okay. Now, I would, I was just trying to, I had a little question here on instructional material. It was just, when I was reading through HB 1467, it was very simple. There was one portion of it where it literally referenced, as we're talking here, instructional material. But then later in the bill, it actually just referenced materials. And what I was trying to find out was when it's, instruction is pretty, I mean, it's a definition in here concerning instructional materials. But when it just says materials, what is it referencing at that time when it's just referencing materials?
Can you give us the area where it language is just materials? And does anybody have the statute up in front of them? Mr. Palmerini probably pulling it up. Okay. Yeah, if you can.
I've got the bill in front of me.
Okay. If you can give us the line number on the bill?
Let me pull through real quick here. I got a lot of red. Just a moment. Almost to the end of the bill. Here we go. All right. Oh, there it is. Okay. 288.
Thank you, sir.
Line 288?
Uh huh. Line 288.
And can we stop the timer for this period of time while we're trying to?
Yeah, where it says provide, the whole sentence is provide a process for public review of public comment, well, of public comment on and adoption of, it struck instructional and just left materials. And so I was just trying to find out.
I understand you want us to read the, the state legislature's mind when they wrote it, but we'll try to, I'm being a little sarcastic. We'll try to figure out what we think it means and how we're going to apply it.
That was it. So you can.
Yeah. Is that all you had?
I was just trying to figure out what that was.
Okay. Well, hold, just stay there just a minute and let's see if we can get an answer.
So, Madam Chair, as, I think I understand the question. There is a difference between instructional materials, which is the actual material utilized as curriculum, for the lack of a better turn, term. Materials itself is pretty much as I read it, anything made available to a child in the school, whether it's in the library, in the classroom library, et cetera. So that's how I read the distinction. Materials is the wide swath of materials made available to a child, whereas instructional materials is more the curriculum. And I'm looking at our folks down there just to make sure I, they are in agreement. Yes, they are.
So does that address your question?
That's all I was trying to make sure of, that clarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other speakers on IJ? Okay, let's move on.
School board policy IJL, library media materials, selection and adoption. Policy IJL is being revised to include language from recently enacted laws to clarify the process by which a parent or resident of the county can request reconsideration of instructional materials in libraries and to incorporate, incorporate language from IMB and KEC. Revisions have been made to the existing policy language to include content formatting and terminology edits consistent with statutory language. We made very minimal revisions based on your feedback from the work session last week, beginning on page two, where we expanded on the criteria and procedures for selection of media center materials and other reading materials, including adding the definition of not harmful to minors and not obscene as based on the state statutes. That is on page two. And continues at the top of page three. In addition, we bolded the word and within the policy under item three and emphasized and, which is harmful to minors in both of those lines of text there. Just want to also point out that we indented both of those paragraphs, those sub paragraphs there, to make sure that it was known that it was emphasizing and clarifying what it means to be free of pornography. Most of the rest of the changes continue within the challenge policy. One of the requests from the board last week was the inclusion of who could, who could lodge a challenge, including that a current district school board member must follow the procedures. So you will see a current district school board member used throughout the remainder of the challenge section of the policy. You'll see that again here, who can lodge a, who can file an objection. We also tried to clarify some of what was requested last week about who could remove a book and what would happen if there were multiple requests. So I'm going to read this. The following procedures shall be applied when the appropriateness of media center materials or other reading materials is questioned herein after a challenged material. This does not apply to state adopted textbooks in use in the classroom. In the event of multiple formal requests for reconsideration of media center materials or other reading materials are filed by the same individual at the same school site, the superintendent or designee shall require the individual to prioritize the order of filed requests. Section B, challenge material shall not be removed immediately. Such material shall be available for student use pending a final decision. Notwithstanding the foregoing, only the superintendent or designee may temporarily remove a challenged material during the pendency of a request for reconsideration if the superintendent or designee believes it will be disruptive to the student learning environment, if the challenged material were to remain available, or if the superintendent or designee determines the materials contain pornography or material that is harmful to minors or obscene. Any request for reconsideration of media center materials or other reading materials or other reading materials form which alleges the material is pornographic, harmful to minors and/or obscene, shall be immediately forwarded to the district literacy council for review and decision. The decision of the district literacy council applies district-wide. On page eight, you will see references to the current school board member as being someone who would need to follow the process outlined in section three A and three B. And again on the following page with item A. And again, on the, on page 11, letter I and under item five A. And then finally, at the end, on page 13, you will see the reference to a current school board member again. And that, those are all of the changes that we've made to the policy based on your feedback since last week.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Castrodell, I notice, I'm not sure if this is current, your button push before we take public comment? Okay. All right. Who do we have wishes to speak on IJL?
The first speaker is Erin Huntley.
Good morning. Is it still morning? No, it's not. Good afternoon. Hi, everybody. Thanks for allowing me a few minutes to speak. And I appreciate the comments and all the work that everyone's been doing on this policy. As a former professional human resource person who wrote a lot of policy and then put it into practice, I know that it takes a lot of hard work and we appreciate that. On behalf of the students in Orange County, I'd just like to speak for a minute about the corresponding forms that go with these. And I saw on the one form for IJL has questions for the person protesting the material to fill out. And it's a, question five says, what do you believe is the theme or purpose of material? Question six says, what do you feel might be the result of a student using this material? And I would just like to advocate to the board that we perhaps also need to ask this of the people who are putting this material into practice in the first place. Because there's a current book that's in Orange County Public Schools called Assassination Classroom that talks about how students can use guns, violence against their teachers in the class. And if, I mean, I can, I understand, I can write what I feel might be the result of a student using that book provided by the county to the students, what the result of that might be. But I think, you know, I'm doing this way after and I'm reading your policies that say, you know, 30 days it's going to take. I understand things take time, reviews take time. But this is something that can be prevented from even being put in our school libraries in the first place. And I would really advocate for you to make sure that there's a way to stop this before it ever gets into the hands of students. There's a lot of different things that I think we could really just step back. What are these topics that we can, we can talk about? I know there's been a lot of talk about pornographic materials. There's other legislation coming down the track with other materials, but what are the big topics that are a problem here? School violence and that classroom assassins, that assassination classroom book is clear school violence. We have books that have illicit drug use, pornography, excessive vulgar and curse words and language. Is this what's really uplifting? If you look for that, I went into the Destiny system and it showed that assassination classroom is at Colonial Cypress Creek Evans High School, Freedom High School and Lake Nona right now. And as a taxpayer and a mother, I do not approve of that. I would look it up. It's part of a series, an anime type series. I would look that up, but it has clear text that says assassinate your teacher. And that is not appropriate. So I'm not sure, I haven't been a part of a lot of these from the beginning, but I followed the track changes in the documents. And I'm not sure that the policy quite addresses things beyond the pornography. So if this is considered harmful to the student, I, I personally think it is, but perhaps there needs to be a little more definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Your next speaker is Clinton McCracken.
Welcome, Mr. McCracken.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Vasquez. It is a shame we are even here having to update policies as a result of the unnecessary culture wars created by our governor and legislature who created laws to fix a problem that didn't exist. who created laws to fix a problem that didn't exist. They could have addressed the teacher shortage crisis, increased the average Florida teacher pay from its abysmal 48th in the country, and focused on school safety. Instead, we are forced to navigate through these recent laws and their negative impact on our students' education and our teachers' ability to do their jobs. I want to share with you a portion of my story that illustrates how these new laws and resulting policies will harm our students. I was a victim of indoctrination when I was a young child, which created significant trauma. My school and my community were unsafe places for me. And although there were physical assaults too, the daily hidden but pervasive attacks were much worse, telling me I was alone in this world, that who I was and what I felt was abnormal, that I didn't belong. This is because I didn't see any LGBTQ role models in my community. I never read about any characters like me in a single book in elementary, middle, or high school. All I was told daily, through daily exposure, was that there was something wrong with me. Indoctrination is the process of teaching a person or a group to accept a set of beliefs. And that is exactly what happened to me. And because of it, I believed there was little to no hope for my life. If only I had access to books and resources at a young age that depicted people who were like me. How things could have been different. It was only later, when I was exposed to new ideas, when I saw myself reflected in books and media, that I understood I wasn't alone. This is why these issues and policies today mean so much. In all that we do, we need to ensure our youth know that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender is nothing to be ashamed of. We need to make sure we aren't letting extremists push our youth back into the closet, denying them the resources and support they need to feel validated and loved. In any of the policies you create, we need to ensure we aren't diminishing the ability of our LGBTQ youth to see themselves reflected in books, media, and classroom resources. We can't allow extremists to remove books for our LGBTQ youth because of their personal religious intolerance toward this community. We need to do all that is possible to protect our students and our teachers from extremism, intolerance, and bigotry designed as parental freedom. To any of our youth who are listening to this today, know that you are perfect just the way you are.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken. Thank you very much. Let's take our next speaker.
I'll learn how to hit that button. The next speaker is Mr. Barton to return.
Thank you again. And I did want to make sure I said this. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak these three times. I really do appreciate that.
Well, to be clear, I, this is what we have consistently done on these policies. So we'll work through what the language says, but this is how we've handled it in the past. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mine are simple, and of course, I'm kind of just bouncing because I'm just trying to go for my own understanding here. One of my notes on this area was a simple one. When you go back through 1467, House Book 1467, it was just a thought that I had, and I'm just trying to see how it was handled. And so it's that type of thing. Inside of there, it says that all materials must be age-appropriate. And I thought about this here because like even with my own kids, like I had sixth graders that were taking 12th grade stuff. And so when you look and you see us with development of this and how to implement it, grade appropriateness isn't the only thing that we had to take into account. We had to take into account age appropriateness when there's a diversity of ages inside of those grades. So when we're looking at the content of these materials that we're saying that you could be whatever, 12 and/or 14, and you're in a class of 18-year-olds, how was that handled when we were looking at implementing 1467 in our local standards?
As I usually clarify, this is a time for comment, but not necessarily question. But I would suggest that...
Well, where may I find it?
No place. I'm sorry. But I don't think that the legislature defined that very well. So I think we'll have a discussion after we've heard from comments and that, we'll bring that up. But that's a difficult issue for us because it's not, it's not very clearly defined how we're supposed to determine what's appropriate.
Okay, so y'all will be discussing it. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess what I'm saying is that when laws are written, it would be helpful if they were specific enough that they could be carried out without unnecessary litigation and debate. And this one lacked a little clarity, as I think we learned about a week and a half ago. So let's take our next speaker. No other speakers?
No other speakers on this policy.
Okay. Member Castrodell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for incorporating our comments and suggestions. I know it wasn't easy working through all that, but thank you. I have a couple of questions. I have three, three points. First is, and this might be more appropriate for Mr. Palmorini, the phrase "harmful to minors." Is that, are we using that as the legal standard of harmful to minors?
Yes, that is directly out of the statute 847.001. And just as a reminder for the board, the Florida courts have interpreted harmful to minors and obscene as the exact same definition. So both of those definitions are in there. They're both defined by Florida law, but they mean the same thing.
Okay. Thank you. So if something, let's say a book is determined to be harmful to minors in the schools, then public libraries and bookstores would also then have to pull that book because it is found to be harmful to minors by state law?
Is that directed at me?
Yes.
So just because we would make that determination, our determination would not be binding on other libraries or bookstores. Remember, that's a criminal statute that we're using the definition for. So it would be the police and the state attorney making that determination as to whether or not it would make the legal definition of harmful to minors sufficient for a criminal prosecution.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that just makes it a little bit more complicated that we have a different definition of the same thing. And that one rises to the level of a crime that others might feel like, well, it's really not that, it's really not a crime. But it's, so then is it really harmful to minors? Does it really fit the definition if others are not going to prosecute?
Mr. Palmorini, you're recognized.
Member Castrodell, I don't necessarily think it's a different definition. But you have to remember, in order to state a crime against somebody, it has to be proven beyond a reasonable doubt. That's just a different standard than we have when we consider matters internally here at a school district. Those are just, it's just a difference of the forum in that you're in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palmorini. I think that that is still vague, since we're taking it from statute to be used to determine if something is illegal, that's punishable up to five years in prison. But it, we're still allowing, the government or the prosecutors are still allowing that book, which is harmful, to be sold to minors or in a public library. It just seems to me that that's a really high bar then to, to reach, to define a book as harmful to minors. Second point is, when we say that we're prioritizing, or we ask a person who's challenging books to prioritize their list, if they come in with a list of 30 books, what does that mean when they prioritize it? They just give us here, "Do this, address this one book now, and then we'll deal with the other ones later." What does that mean? Any idea?
Yes. That is what we were trying to get at because we understand that this strains our resources, especially when there are, if there were to be 30 requests at one time, that would certainly strain the resources at both the school level and the district level. So we would ask the requester to prioritize which ones they absolutely want reviewed immediately.
So, follow-up to that is prioritize would be like, "I want you to look at this one." What did they say? "I want you to look at all these first 10." It seems like it would still be a burden.
We did not discuss quantifying the exact number of those requests. I believe during one of the previous work sessions, we talked about possibly three. But we did not specify an exact quantity in this policy.
Okay. If, I think maybe we need to come back and actually, later on, look at that because it could be an actual strain on the resources that we have. And my third point is the appeal process. I saw in the, in the language that someone could appeal if a school found the book to not be inappropriate, someone then could appeal that to the district. What if it's switched? What if the district or the school level found it to be inappropriate? Could a parent or teacher appeal to the district to reconsider whether it is actually appropriate?
That is not written into the policy. We have not written that in.
Madam Chair, I think that that would be something that would be fair, that there is an equal way to appeal either way.
Let's come back, circle back around.
Thank you.
And we will come back to that. Member Gould.
I would agree that we should have an appeal process. I thank you to the parent or the community member who brought the book to our attention, but, because the, I think it's a poor choice of name for a book. But just to make it clear, the teacher is an octopus that's trying to take over the world, and it's an animation, and it's a manga, and it's also animated as well. And if you have found things that are equivalent to areas of concern where it may be telling kids on how to, you know, do something really bad to a school, could you please email those sections to us? And we'll make sure that that gets looked at. And I'm sure you'll submit this book to, through the process. But I'd be interested in seeing it. My sons are into anime. I'm not familiar with this one, but, and it is a book. I mean, anime can be more adults-driven, and this one is 16 and up too. So it would only be appropriate if it is, it meets our criteria for the, for high school. So, I, but it made me instantly look it up because I'm like, "Well, that's a really horrible name." I, we had workshop this so long, I don't have anything else. I just had concerns about that and wanted to see the sections that you were concerned about. So please email those.
Thank you. Member Gould, and thanks for looking into that. I have downloaded it already, but I haven't researched it yet. So we appreciate that. Question I had. One of the issues that Mr. McCracken raised about his, his experience growing up, and, which I think is so unfortunately very, very common among many, many of our LGBTQ plus youth, hopefully a little less in our community than in some other communities, but not, not knowing that normal, there is no such thing as normal, not knowing that they're not alone, not knowing that there are a lot of people that feel this way, especially when religions generally teach the opposite, is why it is so important that we have books in our library that help our students know that they do fit in, they aren't abnormal, and their feelings are justified, and they're okay. What the board did ask, Dr. Vasquez, the board asked, and I forget who exactly brought it up. It was one of our parents brought up, when we do have to remove a book, especially if it is in that genre, if you, I don't know if that's the right term, but to try to replace additional books for every book that we have to remove, that meets the state standards, it does not contain pornography, it's not harmful for students, but it does have, it does reflect our LGBTQ plus community. They, each of those children, whether they're transgender, whether they're bisexual, whether they're gay, they're lesbian, all of them should be able to find books in our libraries that are not pornographic but are relatable. And I'm not sure that we've done that. And so I want to find out, have we done that? And if we haven't done it, why haven't we done it? And when will we do it?
So we have encouraged schools to have collections that are reflective of the population that they serve. So that's ongoing. Obviously, we've only had the issue with books being removed, what, 18 months, a year? We have not formally put that information out to the school as we're waiting for really the policy to be adopted and then look at how something like that would occur. Typically, purchases are done at the school level with the dollars that they have. Some of these books have been purchased in the past as part of a package. And so for them to then just be able to buy, you know, one book, that would, we would need to research and see how we would recommend schools do it in a manner that is not overburdenous and that they are able to understand the intent. And there are ways. I mean, they have the Scholastic Book Fairs, where they're able to, for some of the dollars that they receive, they use those to improve their collection. But to answer your question, we have not put anything out to the schools to replace what they have removed.
So, and I do know, early on, I was approached by, it's been a while, but I think it was by a book company or something, offering that they had books that would meet that criteria. So I'll try to find that email. We have agreed that our purpose in this policy was to address the legislative issues and, and not go beyond that at this point so that we can get this done. I would like to suggest that we come back when we have more liberty to look at other things we want in the policy while remaining consistent with the statutory requirements. And that possibly there be a policy that speaks to that issue of making sure that our libraries contain a variety of books that appeal to our students, all of our students, and make that very clear in our policy, that that's important to our students. So just a suggestion as we move forward. Let me call now on Member Ferrant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you to those who spoke. I am in agreement that I do think that we, it would be helpful if we had more definition of not just pornographic, but there are, you know, violence and the amount of cuss words. As I've said at prior meetings, how many is okay? If there's, you know, hundreds of cuss words or, you know, dozens of the F-word, is that something that's okay? And it's literary value? How are we defining that? And I think for people to understand too that just because something isn't appropriate in a school setting doesn't mean that, you know, if you feel like it's appropriate outside of school, then that's fine. But in school, we have to, we have to hold a higher standard. These are other people's children, again, that we're talking about. I also would like to just make note, the definition of, of indoctrination can go quite a few ways. The process of teaching a person or group to accept a set of beliefs. And this can go many ways. And so I think this district has done a good job of making... And this can go many ways. And so I think this district has done a good job of making sure that kids all feel included. But there is a great push for everyone in the community to align with the beliefs of the LGBT community. And there are many in District Three who feel that, you know, we have to focus on every child. Every child matters. Every child deserves an exceptional education. But to constantly bring it back to making sure that the LGBT community feels uplifted. I think this district has done, you know, gone above and beyond. But there are others in the community as well who, you know, feel that, what are we doing for every other child? Are those the only children that we're going to elevate? We have an entire month for them, not only in June, but also in October. And many in our community feel that, you know, we can, let's look at the children as a whole and let's focus on their character development. Not necessarily what sexuality they have, or maybe religion they have. Or, you know, where they maybe are originated from. But let's focus on character development. And I think our books in our, in our libraries should focus on that and building character and uplifting people's character and helping them to become successful members of our society.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Member, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that we do lift up all children. We have, we have disability months. We have children. We have Black History Month. We have Women's Month. We lift up everyone. We do have areas of our population and not just the LGBTQ youth and that are marginalized. And when children are marginalized, whether that's due to poverty, that's due to their circumstances, that's due to who they just want to be. To lift them up and have them feel represented by a book or something in a library, I think that is what we should be doing. That is what we do. And we have to lift up all children. Seventy percent, seventeen percent of our youth identify as LGBTQ. Seventeen percent. That's the latest study. I'll share it. That's a big population of our children that deserve attention too. All children deserve attention. And I think as a board, we do strive to balance that every child gets a high quality education and that we meet their needs and we meet them where they are. And we offer that differentiated learning that is so important. But to those who are only focused on the LGBTQ, I can see why you think we elevate them only, but we don't. We just absolutely don't. And that's not what I wanted to say. So I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry that. On our website, I can't find Destiny. I can't find where, can you walk me through? If I'm an average person and I'm not a parent and I want to see what books have been challenged or I want to see what books have been removed. Can you just walk me through how I can do that? Thank you.
Absolutely. You can go to any school website.
Can you do it on the district?
No, we do not have it on the district website, but we can certainly add that.
Can we, because as a, like I, my kids are grown. So if I'm looking for that information, I'm not going to go to a school. I'm going to go to the district website and try to navigate my way. And that's what I did and I couldn't find it.
That's really great feedback. We will definitely take care of that. But by going to any school, the dropdown, when you hover over Media Center, takes you to the Destiny Library Catalog for that school. And then if you want to search any topic, you can click on the search options and search just that school. Or you can search all of Orange County Public Schools for the book that you're looking for.
And, and maybe this is for the superintendent. Can we, can we create something on our, our website that would make it very easy for us to link to Destiny to find out what books are in our libraries? To find out what books have been challenged, like put it in one central spot, maybe put it under the, their current families tab so that for people like me or others, it would be easy just to find this information. I think that's important. I think, I think access and transparency is important and the only way that it needs to be easily accessible. I shouldn't have to go search out of school and then go to the school.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Salamanca.
I echo Member Gallo's. It would be really helpful. We could have it on the district site. I think okay. Over the past year in this country, it has not been a banning of books of all inappropriate books. It has not been about crime. It has not been about guns. Forty percent of the books banned in this country has been targeting LGBTQ youth. And the content of that youth has not been sexually explicit and it has not been about criminal activities or violence. The next forty percent of books that have been banned in this country has been books that have a protagonist of color. So I want to make it very clear that yes, maybe our district is different in that the representatives out here are concerned with pornographic content. And I don't think any board member on here or a superintendent wants pornographic content in any of our books. I think we have made that abundantly clear in all of our meetings that that is not what we're here to do and we don't want that. We want our kids safe from pornographic content. But I also want to acknowledge that policies such as the ones that we're talking about today and the policies being implemented at the state level have been used as a Trojan horse to get rid of books of students of color, of LGBTQ youth and of religious minorities. Ten percent of the books that have been banned in this book have attacked Muslim students, Jewish students. And so the importance of our libraries, of our media centers and of the content of the books is that our students are learning. That is part of education. They're finding who they are, their identity. And they have to see representation in the books they read. Because if they don't have access to that, they assume that anything that is not in a book is different and anything that is different is bad. I also grew up similar to Clinton in a world where I never had a book or a role model that was LGBTQ. That was very confusing. It is really hard to be a student where everyone's reading and watching the same movies. It doesn't mean that you're trying to tell every kid or confuse them on their sexuality or confuse them on their race. It just means we want books accessible to students who are seeking out representation. Doesn't mean we're forcing anyone to read anything. And while I support parents and I am a very big supporter of parents opting out of inappropriate content that they believe for their child is inappropriate, I do not support other parents telling, you know, my kids what they can and can't read at the policy level, at the district level or the state level. Because I don't want other parents to parent my children with their values. And so I, we, we, we're, we're here to do what we're here to do today, which is have a policy that follows state law, state statutes. But I, I don't want our district or school to forget that it is these policies that are the Trojan horse for what is happening in this country. And the numbers don't lie. It is a pretty obvious majority of the books targeting these students. So it matters. And I think it does matter for our district after we implement this policy for us to be responsive and make sure that there is appropriate content that is representative of the diverse set of students and demographics in this district. As we, Member Gallo said, a significant portion of our students do identify as LGBTQ. And just because some parents have a different relationship with their, you know, son or daughter's gender or, you know, sexual orientation does not mean that you get to remove that access from other parents and other students. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Dr. Vasquez. Did you want to be recognized?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Originally, I buzzed in because I wanted to see clarification on the question that Board Member Castor Dental asked regarding process for a parent to challenge a decision. So my understanding is that if a book is removed due to pornography, that then comes to the district to review. And then it will go to, to the board. Is that correct? Yes. So if there is a challenge for a book that's been removed for, for pornography, that actually does come to the board. If a book is removed for other reasons. And, and I, I keep wanting to remind individuals that we currently have books that are being removed and sadly because of this legislation and because of the fear that has been instilled due to the consequences. Some of our individuals are making decisions to remove books that they, it may be pornography, it may be for something else. And there's a lot of gray in that area. I caution the board when looking at the policy that we do not make it so restrictive that we give clear guidance to those individuals that are faced with this task, this daunting task of removing books. That may or may not agree with individuals' personal philosophies and beliefs. And I do believe that we are here to support all of our children. And the statistics that Board Member Salamanca shared are startling. Goes along with the extremely high suicide rate of our children who identify as LGBTQ. And while we do not support pornography in our schools. We are walking a very, very thin line when we look at arbitrary measures to give guidance to individuals who are making decisions about books being available. And I am all for parent choice. And I believe that parents are their child's first teacher and they are the ones that should be making decisions for their child. Based on their beliefs, based on their family structure. But when we start imposing those beliefs on others, it goes both ways. And if we're here to say that we are protecting our children, we need to really look at what we mean by protecting our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Member Byrd.
Thank you. I I just had to, Member Salamanca, Member Gallo kind of already hit on what I wanted to say, but I just think it needs to be reiterated that using the term higher standard every time you talk about LGBTQ kids is hurtful. It's hurtful and it's insulting. And what it tells those kids is that they are a lower standard. This is a lower standard that we're showing in our schools or that we're, that we're promoting or that we're it's insulting and it's hurtful and these kids are hearing it. These kids hear every single word that comes out of the mouths of the adults around them. And I would really caution people to be careful about the words they use. That's number one. Number two, these are other people's children. They're other people's children. They're not your children. So while we are all for parent choice, as Member, I mean, as a superintendent said, that has to do with parenting your own child and the way you want your child raised. That is the beauty of public schools. Public schools are supposed to be places where all children are accepted, all viewpoints are shown and, and experienced. And if that is not what a parent wants for their child to see every day when they go to a school, there are other schools that do not allow all those other viewpoints in for those children. But public schools are schools for all children, all religions, all races, all beliefs. And when you, when you make statements that make people feel as though they are wrong or what they believe is wrong, it's dangerous. It's very dangerous to kids. And if you're lucky enough to not know an adolescent child that has struggled with their sexuality and I, and their, or their gender identity and is not contemplated hurting themselves, then good for you. I'm glad that you have not had that experience because it is painful and it is difficult and it is, it is something that many, many, many of our parents in this community are dealing with every day and are struggling to get their kids through. And one of the ways they do that is by allowing their children to read books or to have books accessible that help them to navigate that. Or to have them go to their Gay and Straight Alliance Clubs after school and be a part of a community that is accepting of who they are or answers questions when they're facing these questions. That is part of that parent's support system to get their child through this. And when we're not supportive of that, we are not helping all of our students. And that is our job in a public school system. So I had some other questions, but I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Byrd. Let me, Member Ferrant, I know you're hearing from a lot of us on this. I, I generally believe that the people who feel this way are probably not aware of, one, the statistics. The statistics are overwhelming. The number of, of our gay, lesbian, transgender, our LGBTQ youth that commit suicide is four times higher than the average student. For our transgender children is the highest. For our black transgender students, it's off the chart. And that's just the ones that commit suicide. The ones that seriously consider suicide is extremely disturbing to imagine what these children are going through. Those are, those are statistics. I've lived long enough to to remember what it was like when nobody came out of the closet. I've lived long enough to have almost lost a close friend to suicide. Because she was gay, which we wouldn't know, lesbian, gay. We wouldn't know. I wouldn't know for years later. I have watched through college when, I was in the circus, when people that were gay didn't come out of the closet because AIDS and they would, and nobody would come near them. And and had friends who had to go home and decide whether to tell their parents out of fear that they would disown them. So knowing what that used to be like. And then seeing what happened after Pulse. I was so shocked. After Pulse, forty-nine people just terrorized, brutally murdered and terrorized for hours. And our community actually responded with overwhelming support. Even our religious community. I, I, I called a meeting of all faiths in our chambers to ask them to publicly say what they were privately saying in their churches about our need to support these people that live in our community. Regardless of our religious beliefs about behavior, to support them as human beings. And every religion showed up. And it was a moment when I was so proud of this community. I was asked to hang the, the gay pride flag on our county building. I asked my county administrator and now I told him, but I thought, I thought it was going to get a lot of pushback, probably safety concerns, liabilities, nothing. It was up the next morning. And I got from this whole community, 1.3 million, I got two emails. Only two emails that were critical. And, and neither of them were terribly critical. So I thought, oh my gosh. It's, I always say, sometimes you have to break somebody's heart to change their mind. And I thought that was a, a moment in our community's history. And I thought that was a, a moment in our community's history where everybody stopped thinking and judging and everybody started feeling and relating. And then within a month, the most horrible thing happened in my mind. A middle school OCPS student was beat up, he was gay, or they thought he was a sissy. He was beat up on his way home from school. And I just could not imagine how, on the heels of the hatred and the violence and the pain, that these people had suffered, that these families had suffered, that this whole, our whole LGBTQ community had suffered, that any of our students would beat up another student because they thought he was gay. So when you mention that you feel like we, that some people feel like we are neglecting their children to help somebody else's children, we're not neglecting anybody. There's no taking away. When my daughter was in, when my kids were in high school, what was it, the, what was the program where you spent the whole day not talking? Does anybody remember that one? And I was like, why aren't you going to talk for the whole day? And she told me it was about solidarity with our LGBT youth. And it didn't take anything from, away from her. It made her proud. It didn't take anything away. We're not take, we're not trying to take anything away. We're just trying to protect every single one of our children. And those who are most vulnerable need protection more than those who are not. It's a, it's just, anyway. Member Ferrante, you're next.
I knew getting into this, I would be the only one with the viewpoints that I have. And I have said this from day one, from the day that I stood there and brought books to your attention. This is not about gender, race, or religion. And I've said that since day one. But since day one, I have only been attacked that I am a bigot, that I'm a hater, that I'm transphobic, homophobic. There are members in this audience who shake their head because they believe that. And that is fine if you would like to believe that. I am not intimidated. So I will not be intimidated, but I want, every child knows that I deeply care about them. And when I talk about raising the standard or having a higher standard, it is about things like higher literacy for our young readers, making sure that we have a high standard in this county to bring forth amazing education so that our young readers by third grade are not dropping off the reading rate. That's what higher standard means. So I don't know how else other people are interpreting that. And you can interpret that any way that you would like. But I will continue to say that books in our county, honestly, I do not know why these are aligned with the LGBTQIA+ community. I don't know. I don't know why they are aligned with race. There are a lot with the, the black community. And it has, I, I just actually found one the other day called Push. It is so horrific, and it depicts a father raping her, his daughter. Detailed descriptions. It is so vulgar and so explicit. It literally made me cry thinking, how many children have checked this book out and literally had to go through? It, it makes you feel like you are the one being violated. Am I saying that children do not, this doesn't happen to kids in our county? No, obviously, I understand what happens in our county. Does this make me against the black community? Absolutely not. I want better for every single one of our children. And I think our books in our libraries should reflect that we want to build character development when we focus so much on sexuality and how they feel in the moment. We are not giving the best to our children. We need to be providing them with books that, you know, motivate them to have amazing characters, character development. And so when parents are coming and they are frustrated and asking for a higher standard, it is not to marginalize children or to, you know, make certain children feel like they're not good enough. It is to make sure that they have the best at their fingertips, books that do not portray their community in a way that is only sexual. I don't think we need to do that. And that's what a lot of these books, and that's why we're bringing them to your attention. And so I appreciate this policy. I think it's, it's very necessary. I think we need to have this. And I guess those are my statements.
Okay. Dr. Kestrel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank my fellow board members for the strong support you have for our LGBTQ community, our students, our staff, people in our community. The reason why people believe you are LGBTQ, you are against it, Member Ferrante, is because you said, why do we have LGBTQ Month? We already have that. Do we need that? You brought that up. And if there are people who, I mean, you asked, I don't know why those books are predominantly black or LGBTQ. Well, you need to ask yourself, why are those the predominant ones that we're targeting? And it's hard for me to justify that you are for increased literacy while at the same time trying to ban books. They don't go together. And the reason why we have LGBTQ Month and we celebrate it is because, as everyone mentioned, the long history of being marginalized, being victims of violence, bullied. And we are saying to our students, school is a safe place for you. We are here to focus on your education. You're here to learn and you are accepted and we are not going to judge you. And we're not going to say that because you're LGBTQ that you don't have character. So it is also difficult to see what's happening in our district where teachers are removing rainbow stickers, which are just a way to say you're safe here. That's all those stickers mean. We're not saying we hope you're gay. It's a way of saying, this is a place where you can come and learn and be free of being bullied, picked on, judged, hurt. And it's, I'm, the fact that the Pulse massacre of 49 people occurred in District Three is not lost on me, that it is three blocks from Boone High School. That, to me, indicates the need for recognizing our LGBTQ youth, the need to support them, and not just for their sake, for all of our sakes. And when we have books, we talk about how important it is to have representation so that our students can see themselves. It's equally as important for other people to see those characters in those books. Books are windows to the world and mirrors. A mirror allows them to see themselves. Windows allow others to see other people's experiences. And for those people who just can't understand the perspective, I recommend you read a book. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kestrel. The, Member Ferrante, the only thing I wanted to follow up with is the reason for the comments and that I've made, and I think others have made, is if we could play back your comments right before about your explanation of indoctrination and then suggesting that having LGBTQ Awareness Month was, was inappropriate because we're not caring for other students. I don't remember your exact words, but you compared the two in a way that I certainly felt suggested that you didn't understand how very different it is to be a youth, an adult in society today, and the need to support those students. I personally do not believe pornography should be in our libraries. I do believe there should be books in our libraries where, as, as Member Kestrel said, whether they're mirrors we need or windows we need, I think we need them both. I think you're absolutely right that reading books and understanding other people's perspective through those books can help us all grow. But I don't support pornography in, in our libraries. I think that's a line that shouldn't be crossed. And I, I have always wanted to believe, you've said it over and over again, and you've said it when you were out there, I've always wanted to believe in your heart and that you're here for every student. And I'm going to continue to believe that. But sometimes your words suggest that you don't understand quite what it's like to walk in those shoes and how important it is for us to show our support to our kids. And part of that is putting the right books in the library so that, that we're not singling out those students or calling those books somehow less quality. A book can have great quality and be about LGBT population. It can be, there are, there are wonderful books out there. And, and as you said, nobody's, we're not trying to teach our children to be transgender or to be gay or lesbian. And for anybody who thinks we're trying to teach them to be that, doesn't understand that you can't teach that any more than you can teach a child to be straight. I just, we are what we are. It's not, I know some people just believe you can just change. I have a friend who went through a conversion class. He's now married to one of the many men in the conversion class. They both went into it really wanting to be accepted in their church. And they went in determined, determined to change who they were so that they wouldn't suffer eternal damnation because that's what their church taught. And in the end, they're living a very good life. They're good people, but they weren't converted because what's in the heart and how you feel is not the same as what's in your head. Member Gallo.
Thank you. I'm sure I think you, you said what I wanted to say very eloquently. I, I don't think we sexualize children. I don't think, I agree with, there shouldn't be pornographic books. There shouldn't be inappropriate books in our libraries. We have found a few, and when we found them and we heard about them, they should absolutely go through the review process, but some we did remove because they should have never been there. So I'm not going to sit up here and say, we don't do that. I would have probably a year ago said, those books aren't in our library. And there were some books in our library that are questionable that should not have been there. And when we found out about it, we did the right thing. We removed them because as a board, we're committed to making sure that we do have high standards and we give the best quality education to our students. None of us think that sexuality should be in the classroom. But when few only associate LGBT community with sexuality, it's hard, it, it, it's like, so who's, who's, who's putting the sexuality in there? I'm not, because when I look at my friends and family members that are gay and lesbian, I don't look at them and sexualize them any more than I would look at my heterosexual friends and sexualize them. I just don't. I see them as loving, beautiful human beings that need our support. Some need more support than others. And I won't, the chair and others did that very well, eloquented, that's not a really good word, but you know, said what I mean to say. But I just wanted, I just wanted again, say that everybody deserves representation, whether it's you're Jewish, you're Muslim, you're gay, you're straight, you're black, you're brown. We all deserve to walk into a library and pick up a book that represents me. I was a little girl, and my parents divorced when I was three, back in a time when that wasn't good. That was looked down upon. I couldn't go in my library and find a book with divorced parents because it wasn't good back then. And as a little girl, I remember feeling shame because my parents were divorced and everybody else in my neighborhood had two parents. It is what it is. Those were just my life circumstances. But how great is it now, 20 years later, that I, that you can find books that talk about divorced parents, even though some people don't believe that parents should get divorced? It's, it's a product of the society that we live in. And when we live in society, that society, as it grows and, and diversifies, deserves representation in an appropriate manner. And I support that diversification and that representation without ever doing any harm to our children. And I agree with, with Chair Jacobs, I, I don't, I don't think that you can indoctrinate. And if we were going to indoctrinate, I've said it before, it would be that every third grader was proficient in reading and we would have saw 100% up on these forums today instead of, of what we did see. And the other point that Chair Jacobs was saying was that when you say stuff like trans whatever, when you're speaking to the public, there's a child at the end of that sentence. And there's a child that heard you, and there was a child that was hurt because you said that. And so if you're going to stand up for all children and support all children, recognize that words, especially to children, matter and are hurtful, they're just hurtful. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo.
Where do I even begin? First of all, with the trans whatever comment, if you do replay that, I explained, it was about a male student who identified as a girl, and then I said a trans. And in my mind, I'm thinking, or whatever we're calling them, because honestly, I don't know. Are they trans? Are they bi? Are we calling them? I'm not sure. So I'm not trying to be rude. I know that's the way everybody else talks about it, and I'm not trying to be rude. I understand every child matters and every child has purpose. So if you're a child right now and you're part of the LGBT community, you matter. You 100% matter. You are valued and clearly very respected. But right now, we're talking about policy IJL, about books. And what I'm hearing from this board is that you, none of you want pornography. But every time a book gets challenged, it is not, oh, that, yeah, you're right, there is pornography in here. It's, wow, you're against the LGBTQ community. And I have never once said that I am against that community since day one. I stood there and said, it is not about gender, race, or religion. It's about offering high-quality books. And when I say high-quality books, you can represent every child. That is awesome. I think it's great what you said about the having divorced parents and having that included in there. We can have that without constantly trying to push sexual content on our kids. And sexual content meaning, like this book, Push, where if I read it right now, Chair Jacobs would ask me to stop reading because it is so vulgar. No child should have to have that available to them at our public school. If a parent wants to buy it for them, they're more than welcome. But we're talking about books that we're providing with taxpayer funds, and we, we have a, a very diverse community, race, sexuality, religion. And we have to come together and understand that we all have to work together to make sure that our kids are reading proficiently and then providing books that are academically rich books. We can provide very, you know, very, a variety of, of books that, that connect with each child. But when we're, when, when the books, for whatever reason, have sexual content in them, I don't know why these authors are doing that, but that's not what we need for our students. As far as LGBT Month, LGBT, whatever we want to call it, as far as that month, the reason I bring that up is because then in our schools, over their, you know, their, their TV little program in the morning, in their, in discussions, that is now being brought in, okay? that is now being brought in, okay? And so there are very, there are a lot of people in our community who, their families do not align with the values in the sense of, you know, there are families who don't align with the values taught. I understand that every kid matters, okay? So this is, it's a touchy subject. But at the same time, do we have a religion month? Do we have like a Christian, are we selling Christian month? And then every, then we're going to teach that every month and share that? Well, not everybody in the community has the same value. Does that mean that Christian kids or Buddhist kids don't have value? Do you see what I'm saying? And so that, from our perspective, is what I'm, that's the reason I brought that up. As far as the rainbow stickers, I've heard from a lot of teachers who have said to me that they feel intimidated into putting those stickers on their door because if they don't have it there, the perception is that they don't stand with the LGBT community. And that is just not true. Some teachers, they don't want to have the sticker on there for whatever reason, but that doesn't mean that they don't stand with that community. And so when you're bringing that, Member Castor Dental, I believe, brought that up. And what happens to those teachers who don't want to bring, to put that on their door?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I think it is incredibly valuable that we have diversity of opinion here today. And I don't want to, I know there's a lot of people in our community that believe and feel the way that you feel. I know that there's a lot of people in the community who are confused by the terminology. And I don't think, I understand deeply why it is offensive to those students, but I also think this is part of the learning process that we do as a society together. And we, as a board, can be leaders in kind of bridging these conversations that are very, very difficult. I think, you know, it's hard when you talk about books because books in our society, for as long as history has existed, this has not just landed in this decade or even in the century where books have been the avenue for banning topics that we don't want to talk about as a society. It was divorce at some point. It was race at some point. It was slavery at some point. And so the reason why this always becomes a very touchy subject, and it will continue to be, is because of that. Because it is inherently always, books are kind of the cross-section of the friction points that we experience in our society every day. And I understand the concerns on sex and profanity and all of that, but, you know, I have my notes here. One of the books that has always gone back and forth is To Kill a Mockingbird, right? Harper Lee, white woman from Alabama, writes a book that has profanity and racial slurs, and it's a way for an author to talk about the complexity of our justice system and race. You have Grapes of Wrath by John Steinbach, a white man from California. You know, he was writing, not only is he a Nobel Prize winner in literature, right, but he wrote about the Great Depression, about a poor family and farmers in Oklahoma, about economic hardship, about the agriculture industry changing. But, I mean, it includes profanity. It improves, it includes alcohol abuse, and it just includes the reality of what people experience. And it is uncomfortable, but that is the role that literature has played in our society for a very, very long time. And so I think, you know, the perspective of folks in my community that I represent as much as you represent on different sides of how we think about it is, do we give access to books and different experiences to students who want that and whose parents want that in public education? Because we all pay the same tax dollars for these books. And I don't want to prevent you from your right as a parent to say, "I don't want my kid reading any profanity or any sex or any of the other things that are on these books." I think you have that right, and I think everyone should have that right as a parent. But I don't think you impose that on everyone else because I do want my kids to learn about the reality of economic hardship. The reality is a lot of kids in our community experience rape and incest and from their own families and from their own friends. And if they don't have access to books and characters who model a behavior or how you get out of these really tough circumstances, you're not going to get it from the same family members who might be hurting you. And something like seeking help or seeking a community or religion, those are all modeled and learned behaviors that our students might not have if it's not through literature and through our education system. And so, you know, I don't think it's an easy problem. It's something that generations before us have figured out and kind of struggled with. But I want to say, I appreciate your perspective. I appreciate who you represent, and I hear it every day because I do want to cross those But I would like for our district to work together, represent our community, and keep national politics out of it and state politics out of it. Because there is a larger political discourse, as much from the left as there is from the right, that forgets there's people and students at the end of this. And so I'd like us to at least focus on how these policies impact our community and our students. Because I think that's where we can make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Salamanka. Member Felder.
Wow. Thank you. I've heard, I was in the back, and I've heard many of my board members in your discourse as we discuss this. I do just want to just offer a different, well, it may not be a different, but just my perspective. I own the book Push. I read Push, and some of my students read Push because they could identify the character Sapphire, because they went home every day and they lived with what she experienced. She wrote the book, I think maybe in a week's, I mean, a short time, she wrote the book. Now, I gave them choices to read Secret Life of Bees, and they had a lot of choices. I got permission from my administrators at Edgewater to teach Pursuit of Happiness, and in the fifth chapter, it talks about sodomy, an opportunity to meet Christopher Gardner. He and I talked and I shared my nine weeks' lesson plan of teaching the book. And he asked me, "How are you teaching this book?" I said, "Because you're not the Lone Ranger. You're not the only person who has lived homeless." We had a valedictorian at Edgewater. We did not find out until a week before the seniors were to graduate, he was living in a car. I said, "He needed to read that book because he needed to know regardless of what people are going through. He's not by himself." Yeah, that was sodomy in it, but he went, the book goes past that. That was just an event that happened. One of the things that was so phenomenal that Martin Luther King talked about in his whole ideology about nonviolence, it wasn't for black people to understand it. It was for those whites who could not understand the need for community love. He wanted them to catch the vision. He wanted them to catch the vision. So he presented, when he wrote that letter from a Birmingham jail, he wrote it to the clergy of Alabama because they had an issue with the law. And he asked the question, the same question Antigone asked, "Creon, is it better to obey man's law or the moral law? What is going to lead you?" So as we teach our books and teach reading in this great district that I was educated in and it still works, we have to allow students and teachers the opportunity to share their perspectives. Push is, it's a book that deals with some dark places, but we live in a dark world. It doesn't mean that we have to continue to perpetuate darkness, but we need to recognize, I can take you right now to an apartment complex in my district where some girl is living like Sapphire. You know how I know? Because they called me. They come to my house, and I've taught them at some of the schools that I've taught in. But it doesn't mean I perpetuate that, but I let them know, "You're not alone. Let's see how we can work through this." I just think, as our board member Salamanka said so beautifully, we have to learn as a district to see the resources that we have and learn how to work through it to, it works to advantage of what's going to be good for our students. And every book that I've read that was controversial, I sent letters home to parents. And I said, "If you don't want me to teach this book to your child, I have a fresh alternative." And if you want, if you have another book, I say, "But understand that they're going to be asked to leave the classroom when we enter into the conversation because I don't want to offend you or the teachings you've given them." And out of the five years I taught that book, I had a total of three parents who disagreed with me teaching the books. So I want to end in just saying this. We have a board of highly intelligent women. We have a district that's led by a highly intelligent superintendent who's compassionate and a cabinet that is sensitive to the needs of our children in this district. I believe that we must support, support, and trust this process because this is good, it's healthy. But we must understand, again, education is the great equalizer. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Gold.
First, I really want to lift up some of what Member Salamanka was saying about having very different perspectives and all deeply caring about our students and our community is valuable and that this can become the example of how to seek understanding and empathy for each other's positions if we continue to work together to listen. And one of the values I'm finding in this discussion, which is highly sensitive, is that we are all listening, and I appreciate that. I am seeking to understand with some questions I'm going to have right now, though. So you mentioned about religious months, and when I think about the LGBTQ community, I don't think of it as a religion any more than I think of black or Hispanic or white or Asian as a religion. It is something that we're, and this may be my belief, that we are born into. Because I know people in all those areas, including in the LGBTQ community, that are Jewish and Buddhist and Protestant and Catholic. So I'm trying to understand what you were trying to say there so that I can get clarity on that. And then, all, when we do Black History Month or we do celebrate Hispanic Month and the literacy months and disabilities and language and all of those things, multilanguage, we do announcements, we have cultural activities, and it does spur conversation about things we might not know and hopefully builds empathy for things that we're not exposed to. Because I think all of us would love the comfort of living just in the world that we want to see and be, but the reality is, if you want to live, you have to be open to learning things that you may never disagree, never agree with, ever agree with. I'm not big on profanity. My sons are of the age where they like to use it a lot, and I am not big on profanity, not that I don't use it, because I do once in a while and I'm over the edge. But there is a generational language out there right now that uses profanity on a regular basis to communicate. And I don't accept it, but they tell me it's not any worse than the word "and," and I'm like, "Yes, it is." But from their mind and their perspective, so how do we bridge to communicate with them? And I'm not talking about our babies, and I'm not talking about developmentally inappropriate or pornography or any of those things. But when I hear Member Felder talking about real-life kids struggling right now that are living in that environment, how do we bridge and communicate with them in a way that they hear it? And I really am trying to seek to understand. This is, these are true questions. So when it comes to you, I hope you take a moment to kind of give me your perspective on those things.
Member Ferrante, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, I think when I brought up the month, it's really just to explain how there's so many students in our, in our district, so many. And I believe that there are so many who feel that they are not heard. So if they don't fall into the category of the different months that are displayed, for instance, like Hispanic Heritage Month, it also, it's at the same time as LGBT Month, and they don't feel that they get the same amount of recognition, if I could say that. It depends on which school. But what I think I would love for people to understand, and I absolutely love what you said, Member Salamanka. She has a beautiful way with words and I think is very, you know, articulates herself very well. And I think we need to bridge the gap. Right now, I feel like we are heavily on one side, and then there's others on the other side, and there is no bridge. And so I hope to be a bridge to get all of us together at this, you know, on one, with one goal. And that, obviously, I think all of us are here passionate about education. We wouldn't be in this position. I was a stay-at-home mom. I was, had a really wonderful life, and to put myself into this position, it's truly because I care about the kids. I don't think anyone in their right mind would do this just to be blasted. And so from the same community that is trying to say, or people in our community who are trying to say that they, you know, we need to come together, the emails and the amount of hate that I have received just because I'm trying to stand for something that I truly believe in and I believe that our kids deserve great books. I mean, I think there's a lot of things we're going to have to agree to disagree. Although I understand that there are students in our district who are walking through what the book Push talks about, I don't know that that is in the best interest of every child for them to, to, like, read through all of that. A lot of times, these notes come home, like, "Are you okay with your child doing, you know, being a part of this class?" Those notes get lost. The parent doesn't receive it. I've had many, many parents say, "Did you, did you get any of the information about this? I don't know if I really want my kid in that. Do you know if that's happening?" And I said, "Well, I got a note. Did you not get a note?" And then they didn't get it. So I think a So I think a lot of that, we have to work together to make sure that, you know, parents do have the choice. What was your other question?
Kind of how you envision, how you would...
Profanity?
Well, the profanity, I think, you kind of addressed with Push, and I think that comes back to, you know, that opt-in, opt-out, and parent choice that I think we're all talking about. I think that's where we do have that common agreement, that the parents should be able to utilize whatever tools they want to bring up their children. And there's going to be things on both sides that certain parents don't feel is appropriate to be teaching their child. Sometimes we're talking about religious things. I remember a long time ago when my boys were in the AP class for World History, there was a discussion about Muslim, and it was taken out of context, and they didn't understand it until they came in and actually saw the textbook and the curriculum. So I think sometimes there's that, but I also wanted to know how you see application, where you see application of celebrating those two weeks. Is it appropriate to have, you know, on-air morning announcements? Is it still appropriate to have after-school clubs where kids can go? You know, what... When you brought those up, that's what made me kind of think about them.
I think that's something that, as a board, we look at that, but, I mean, I believe we represent our community well in the fact that, you know, our after-school clubs, for instance... I know that's a hot topic at this point. There's literally clubs for everybody. Like, you're into Rubik's Cubing, I'm sure there's a club for you. If you're into, you know, whatever it might be. I mean, poetry, and there is the GSA club. And I have had people ask me, "So are you trying to get rid of that club?" No, not at all. That's never even been... Never have I ever said that. But we do have to have, when we talk about higher, like, high standards, it's to make sure that we're protecting our students, that we are making sure that, you know, we're taking care of our kids, and, you know, having adult entertainers come in for our schools. I agree with what happened. I know nobody else here does, but that's okay, and that's the bridge that we're trying to build. And so I think we need to understand, I think maybe a lot of the tension that is being felt is that it has been sort of a one-way street up until now. Many people, I believe everybody on the board always usually agrees and has the same thoughts. And so I know I don't always have the same thoughts as everyone, but I hope to, like Member Salamanca said, bridge the gap and try to help us all come together for the one goal of helping each of our students, no matter who you are, no matter where you come from, no matter what life is thrown at you, no matter if you are homeless, in a car, like you were saying. It doesn't matter who you are, that you truly can excel, that you can get a quality education, and that Orange County Public Schools would be known as a place with high standards of education, that every child comes here and receives a quality education, and they're soaring readers, and they're soaring mathematicians, and that is my goal. What's hard is when we speak and, and I'm sure I'm totally over time and whatever, but, like you had just mentioned about Muslims. So imagine mentioning that, and now you get hundreds of people telling you that you're anti-Muslim. That's not what you meant at all. You're just discussing things. And so that is what is hard, is when I discuss topics that not a lot of people want to discuss, and then I'm told that I'm something that I'm not. I'm just here as a loving, caring, kind individual.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to respond, Member Frant, just to one question that you put out, I think sincerely about that we don't have a Christian Awareness Month. And I'm sure you're probably aware, but that stems from the Constitution and the Establishment Clause and the First Amendment that separates church and state.
Yeah.
And so it's not a discrimination against Christians, but we can't pick out one religion and celebrate that religion. So the only other thing I wanted to add to or come in for a close on is that... Well, one other minor correction. We actually don't all agree on everything. Probably not as big a disagreement as this might appear to be, but I'm not sure that this is as big of a disagreement as it appears to be. And I think that having this conversation has been very healthy. And when you talk about bridging gaps, you can't bridge gaps from a distance. You can't bridge... I don't believe you can change people's minds by arguing. I think that you have to listen, and you have to work to understand, and there has to be clarity about what we are disagreeing when we do disagree. And I think that a lot has come out of our conversation here today. And I also am always proud of this board, and some people will not be proud of me for saying this, but I am always proud of this board for its ability to disagree and still remain respectful, because there's far too little of that in the world today. And I know our teachers watch. I know there was a point where parents were writing to me saying, "I can't watch your meetings with my kids anymore because of some of the dialogue that was taking place at the dais here." And I am proud today that people can watch and they can see a conversation among adults behaving like adults and having an honest discussion. So, Member Salamanca, I'm always just blown away by you and your perspective. I would say your maturity, but that sounds like an awful condescending thing to say, but you're just... You are just... You're very insightful. And so on that note, I am going to let the vice chair close this out, and now I'm going to look for a motion. Vice Chair?
We have one more policy.
Oh, no, that's right. We don't want a motion. I'm sorry. It's a rulemaking. Never mind the motion. Go ahead. I know we have one more.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. I was just going to say thank you for all your kind words, Member Salamanca. As usual, you just kind of brought it. You just kind of zipped it up in a nice little neat package, and you brought us back to the center, which is where we need to be. We do disagree. I've heard from parents that have viewpoints like Member Frant. A lot of them are my friends. So it's just... All views should be represented, and I do, and I agree with the chair that this probably was a long overdue conversation that the board needed to have. And so I hope it leads to a greater understanding from all of us. Thank you.
All right. Let's take up our next policy.
KEC, Challenge Materials. We are recommending this policy for repeal because it has been incorporated into Policy IJL.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Yes. Hold on. Yes, there is. It's Mr. Barton.
Pardon me?
Mr. Barton.
Mr. Barton? We're going to repeal it, if that's okay? Okay. Okay. Well, I say that. I mean, it still has to have a public hearing, but any board discussion? Okay, then this will all move forward.
Yeah, I just need to make sure that there is consensus on the board to move it forward, it seems like.
Yeah, I'm sorry. When I said it's... Yeah, I should have said it is moving forward because I'm looking around, and when nothing's lit up...
Gotcha.
That's a pretty good indication to me. I'm not reading minds. I'm reading the board in front of me. Thank you. Any further business to come before the board before we adjourn?
No.
Do we need to announce our executive session?
Yes, we are going to recess this meeting and go into executive session on three pieces of litigation, which we previously announced.
But first, we're going to grab a quick bite.
Yes, yes.
For lunch, or we're taking it with us. What is your recommendation?
I will take you all at your pleasure.
Take a minute. All right, we're going to take a minute. Okay.
We need a minute.
What is a minute really? I know, you told me.
But we still need a minute.
Yeah. Okay.
What's tomorrow? Wednesday? What? Oh.